Hello, everyone. I would like to call the December ninth?
Tenth.
Meeting of the Concord Planning Board to Order. I think, first of all, a couple of announcements. This meeting is being recorded, both audio and video recorded, and tonight, two cameras. So I think we're very well represented here by the record. But if you wish, you could also make your own recording. And if you do, though, let us know so we can make arrangements so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. The second thing, just to clarify for people, in case you're here for the discussion of the Main Street planned residential development, that item is scheduled for 7:30 PM this evening. We will not begin a discussion of that before 7:30 because it's advertised at that time. So prior to that, we have another application that we'll be looking at, and we'll also take care of any other committee business to fill available time until 7:30. So just so you understand. So let's tackle our first item of business, which is a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on the application of Louis Keane for a special permit under section 7.2 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for the completion of a landscape wall within the floodplain Conservancy District at 394 Monument Street. So do we have someone representing the applicant?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Paul Kirsten from Safety and Peril with the Engineering Services Project. So get right to it. This is 394 Monument Street. You may all know it. It's right on the Concord River, right by the bridge on Monument Street. Every spring floods, you can see they are filled with water. So for the record, the floodplain is right here, and it goes through the house, and it comes out over here. So this entire portion of the property is within the floodplain. The applicant and owner of the property, Louis Keane, he started building a small landscape wall around the edge of this existing patio. He hasn't finished it yet. We're here to ask that he can finish it. So as most of the property is within the floodplain, this wall is within the floodplain. So he's filling 68 cubic feet in the floodplain in order to complete this wall, in order to provide the kind of storage storage where it proposes to. Do you have this area over here, virtual 110 cubic feet? So that's greater than one and a half times what he's filling, which is what is required. So it's pretty straightforward, but I will take any questions if you have them.
So questions for the board? Well, I'm just wondering if the NRC has had a look at this application, and what did they say?
Yeah, so we've been in front of the NRC a couple of times. They intend to issue an order for this as long as you don't require any changes. So that meeting's often the 18th, next Wednesday. The only thing that they ask from us, the region at the retention meetings, is that this wall is actually within the footprint of the old patio. We had done a filing for them back in 2013. So our revised plan showed the outline of that old patio. Were there really concern with total coverage opposed to volume as this board is versus ZBAs? We were just showing that the footprint is what it used to be. It's not really changed, and what is been there historically.
And then will access to the garage be affected by the compensatory storage?
No, so is this labeled as a garage? It's really a shed. I mean, the thing is falling apart. It's a shed. It's not really usable. Yeah, it's a shed.
No, I'm looking at the garage there.
Oh, yeah, no, that won't be impacted. All of our work will be up here, so they will be okay. We're trying to avoid changing the ways to be able to talk.
Okay, so the label's pointing up there.
I was confused, too.
It's not that area. See, it seemed to me, look at the plan, that you're labeling an area, but you're pointing at an area. Okay, I get it. All right.
Just a really quick, what's, sorry. Hello.
Yeah.
Can you just describe what if you know, what the proposed compensatory storage area will be? Is it a shone or grass or land base or?
So right now it's grass. It's not very strong. It's just grass right now. That's what we're going to be returning to. So there's going to be some material. This is a retaining wall that doesn't quite define the property line, but more or less does. So we'll be really digging some out and two to one up as we approach that retaining wall. And they'll just want to see it running up.
What kind of difference will the retaining wall, the new one, make in terms of the flooding? Is that anticipated to really dramatically cut down on that springtime flooding for the occupant?
Not really. So the floodplain design desire round is 100-year, which might happen once in each of our market times. But, and I haven't seen this as much as maybe neighbors have or the property owner has, but from what I understand, the flooding in this average springtime really is about right here. So it doesn't quite get up to the patio. And there's a gap in the wall over here. So if we were to see a 100-year flood, it wouldn't really protect them for much. But this, I mean, as I said at the beginning, there's not much that they can do here. The whole thing's been flooded. But it's been there since 1864, I believe, so they haven't had too much of a problem.
Yeah, things are getting worse, though. Okay. Any other points or discussion? Could I get a motion?
I'd make a motion that we recommend favorably to the Board of Appeals to issuance of a special permit pursuant to ZBL seven, section 7.2 and 11.6 pursuant to the application of Louis Keane subject to incorporating the Natural Resources Director's conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And any discussion, motion? Okay, all in favor? Okay. All right, so seeing that we have about 20 minutes before our next item, let's take a look at the approval not required plan for 365 and 369 Commonwealth Avenue. And this is one that I believe the town is asking for.
This is an A&R plan for what is the Giraud property. And this is currently the Concord Housing Authorities, has it a board on here? This is Commonwealth Ave. This is the New Brook Street and Road Trail. The Rotary is up this way, and West Concord is down this way. What this A&R plan, which was authorized by Town Meeting, it's past table, this is article 27, authorizes the town to convey approximately 9,400 square feet of this total property to the Housing, Comfort Housing Authority to help implement the construction of an additional affordable dwelling. This plan will also consolidate. There's currently three different parcels. This plan will consolidate those parcels for the town.
So the question I have is that since this is going to create a non-conforming lot, what are the complications as a result of that?
So this parcel is already a non-conforming parcel. The current plot for the Concord Housing Authority is non-conforming, but this will make it less non-conforming by providing additional frontage and will make it conforming to area.
Okay, so, and the two dwellings will be under one lot?
Correct. This will be consolidated into one lot.
Right.
Possibly.
Yeah, and because it's affordable, they can do that. So there won't need to be a special permit application or?
For the construction of the affordable home? Yes, there may be, but that's, that's not part of.
Not part of this application, just curious. Okay, thanks. Any other questions? May I entertain another motion? I think that we actually have a thread text for this one. We did. I know I saw it. Maybe on the back.
So there's one minor edit to the motion. Oh, motion signs. I didn't remember. As part of your, as part of the conveyance of this property, the town will include with the conveyance a vote, actual formal written vote of the board. So as part of your motion, you do authorize the chair, the clerk of the town planner, to endorse the plan, but also the plan and the vote of the board.
I move to endorse the plan for the Town of Concord dated December 4, 2019, by Greenman Peterson, Inc., for 365 and 369 Commonwealth Ave. As approval not required, because the plan is not a subdivision, because Lot 2 shown on the plan has a required area, and the frontage on a public way is increasing. And parcel one is a non-conforming parcel that is not considered a building lot. And authorize the chair, clerk, or town planner to endorse the plan and the vote of the planning board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay. Another affordable housing lot in Concord. So now let's move to the next item that we have that's available, which is a recommendation to the Select Board of the appointment of full members to the West Concord Advisory Committee. So the, basically, the situation here is that in the West Concord Advisory Committee, Jeff Collins, he's a full member, his term is expiring, and the committee's recommended that the current associate member, Jeffrey Walton, who is in attendance, be appointed as a full member in his place. And so that will help keep the West Concord Advisory Committee able to maintain its quorum of full members. So any discussion of that recommendation? All right. So I'm just going to go ahead and move that to recommend to the Select Board the appointment of Jeffrey Walton as a full member of the West Concord Advisory Committee for a term to expire on May 31, 2022.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor? All right. We're moving right along. So the next is something that we will only be able to scratch the surface of, but actually, it's great that we have at least a couple of minutes to discuss now, which is the 2020 Annual Town Meeting Zoning Bylaw Amendments. I did go to the Town Meeting Preview Meeting and just ripped through 10 of our accepting bylaw amendment board articles in about 15 minutes. Actually, they went down very well. We didn't have a lot of, you know, feedback. I think the only feedback I got was the Town Manager, Stephen Crane, who was saying that perhaps the standard for the trailers on a lot should be higher than just simply that it be registered, that it should be roadworthy or, you know, inspected. And I said, I don't know if trailers are inspected, but also that I don't think we have the same issues that Longmellow did about, he said that there were, you know, cars on cinder blocks, and that they would just send in the registrations each year. And so it was registered, but the car was not privateable. It was just there.
So there is a terminal, operable or?
Operable. So perhaps we should look at the language and maybe make that clear.
Right, I'll check with the building commissioner.
Okay. But I do know that in our public forum and through just other comments that we've collected over, you know, the last several weeks, that we've gotten other feedback. And we have two meetings left before the warrant closes. So my hope is that next week, when we meet again, our last meeting this year, that we'll really be redlining in these draft warrant articles. We have a number of them. We still, we have a rough draft and a PRD article now. So that if you have further input that you've gathered that hasn't yet been incorporated in our articles, it needs to get to Elizabeth so that she can propose language that we can look at next week. Now, so without sort of drilling through all these different things, I would just suggest, send them to Elizabeth, and we'll see if they're concrete suggestions that can be put on a redlined list for next time. The thing that we do have for this week that maybe we can spend a few minutes on is the PRD rough draft that was distributed to the board. So.
And the Throw Depot.
Oh, and the Throw Depot article. That's right. So any questions on, or any feedback on the draft PRD article?
I intend to have feedback on it. I haven't had time to review it, but I didn't know that it was on the agenda for tonight, but look forward to reviewing it, so thank you for doing that.
Others?
Hey, I just wanted to make sure you know, we talked about kind of what you proposed last time. So I don't know if you had a chance to see kind of what we did with your input and how we reacted to it and things like that.
I saw Elizabeth's latest draft. So presumably, what was discussed last time is a reflection of sort of what I proposed and then what it's turned out to be. I think my only point I wanted to raise in what I, what I came to realize this week actually is for the definition of what is not upland in our, what is not considered upland in our calculation of sort of minimum open space. And I didn't understand that an isolated wetland is technically not included in the definition of, I don't know where I get it, but what the bylaw states. And so didn't know if that was discussed at all. Again, that was news to me, but it might, you know, maybe a bit of an oversight again as I reviewed other towns' bylaws. The language always just said wetland constitutes non-upland rather than, so therefore, an isolated wetland would still be included in that, if that makes sense. But.
Yeah, I agree, because I think the intent is, I was trying to understand if there was anything related to like the functionality of the wetland or how it was regulated versus the fact that it can't otherwise, it can't be developed anyways under this statute-wide framework. So I think it makes sense to, as Hanley says, to include an isolated wetland that's regulated under the federal act. It's counting towards that definition.
Okay. I would just say that my comments on the PRD draft were that there was a specified percentage of units that, for example, were under 2,500 square feet or that had one-car garages. But there wasn't a specified kind of bonus density if you achieved that percentage. In other words, there's no real formula right now. And it struck me as unusual that you would have a criterion, a minimum criterion, but no definition of what the bonus would be. So I think we need to investigate that for both, you know, that and for the energy efficiency incentives. So, you know, if we can get to a formula, that I think it would be beneficial to developers and the public to kind of understand what they give to get would be. You know, either that or leave it totally open-ended, which is kind of where we are now. You know, for example, with affordable housing. If a developer offers affordable housing, they can get up to a 100% bonus in units. But we don't really specify, okay, this many affordable units gets you this much bonus, right? And that latitude kind of creates opportunities for negotiation. It also, of course, creates ambiguities. So we just need to decide because, you know, one problem is that a HERS rating that's really good now might not be a great HERS rating in 10 years. And we can make estimates of, you know, declining scale, but those are based upon what we know now, not about, you know, what technology changes might occur. So that was my main input.
Yeah, I have to say, since we have some time, and I wasn't here last time, but, you know, the feedback that I heard in the zoning initiatives event was, you know, saying, okay, sustainability is great, but what does it mean? And what actual key is there? And I get it's a balance between sort of keeping it a bit vague. There's a benefit to that, but then also still trying to kind of put a stake in the ground and say, like, this is what we stand for in Concord, and this is what it means to us.
There was, okay, yeah.
Were we going to solicit input on that from the Sustainability Director?
I think so.
Yeah.
So a couple of meetings back, the Sustainability Director, there was a checklist that was, she was looking at.
Yeah, and we didn't really hear anything back.
So I haven't heard back from her yet. And that checklist was something that could be applied to all site plans. So with the change in the PRD bylaw to a par site font or Google, then that checklist would be implemented at that point. So I'll have to check with her if she was going to read that.
One other point on the PRD bylaw is that I don't know if we actually settled on a percentage of open space. I think we had discussed 33, we discussed 35. And do we want to determine that percentage now? I mean.
I think we agreed on 35.
I thought we left it at 35.
Okay, then that was good. Then I just have a faulty memory.
I think our thought was we could adjust it down in the warrant article.
If, that's true.
That's why we.
Yeah, yeah, so 35 is it? Okay, great.
Five minutes, do you want to do, no diesel?
Well, unless you have one more.
Yeah, just since, again, I wasn't there last time, I think the only last point that struck me in my review of all these other PRDs was that, like, on the surface, in our sort of basic density calculation, we're including like 25% of the wetland area in that. And that just was atypical from anything else that I saw. So we're sort of giving some density away for nothing, like, just at the outset of the definition of basic density. That's my only observation, but I don't know if you guys talked about that.
Let's talk about that again.
Okay, we'll talk about it again in one week.
Exactly.
Okay, that will, let's table that point. So actually, now, if we can just quickly get any feedback on the Throw Depot Boundary Warrant Article. Any input on that? I actually, I mean, clearly, the warrant article itself is really simple. The wording, most of the wording is actually the explanation, and, which makes sense. The one point that I don't think that I saw in the explanation, which of course is already a long explanation, is that, you know, some reference to the MAPC study, you know, and that actually aligning the boundaries with the property lines may improve the redevelopment opportunity, you know, reduce, simplify, let's just say, some of the redevelopment. It would just maybe be a sentence at the end. Because you do mention that we're also dealing with the boundary across the street. And just try to, you know, make sure that we're motivating why we're doing it adequately.
In the explanation?
In the explanation, yeah, yeah. Any other comments on our pending warrant articles to prep us for the discussion next week?
For that one, did the property owner get in touch with the abutters? Or did you ever hear about it?
Yes.
Yes. So the property owner for 159 Sudbury Road did speak twice with the direct residential abutter on the opposite side of the residential, the two-family. And they did not have any issues with the proposal.
Okay.
So I know that there must be pending issues on the accessory dwelling units by law and the two-family coming back from the public forum. So again, get in your questions and points.
The last item, I can't remember who was going to work on the explanation for?
Oh, the.
Ooh, groceries.
Groceries.
I need to remember. The other guy. It's a wait.
It's before Friday.
Okay.
Okay, so we just have two, three minutes left before our 7:30 item. Anything else?
Oh, we can take the picture tomorrow.
Could take the picture. Everybody can witness our picture. Sure, why not?
Why are we doing it?
We're taking a picture for the annual report for the town.
Stand up against the left white wall.
Yeah, up against the wall.
Under the lights. Where does work room? I know. We're going to compromise, we're going to move you over. And sadly, as is always, the ladies work the show, and we have to be proud.
All right, I get feedback. Do you think you'd really be back? Keep going, keep going.
Alan will that way just a sec. There you go.
All right. Great.
One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. You saw it here first. All right. So I think it's 7:29, so we can get ourselves set up for our 7:30 item. I would call it the moment that my watch registers. It's 7:30. A watched watch never turns. Yeah, I thought so as well. Okay. So now for our 7:30 item, the recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for the application of science development permitting LLC for variance and special permit under section 7.5, 10, 11.6, and 11.7 of the zoning bylaw for a, what a now 34-unit planned residential development at 1440, 1450, and 146B Main Street. So represent the applicant, please.
Good evening, Rich and Eric, engineer for Williams Project, Jeff Luter, absent for the applicant, Ravi Laitan, counsel, Kimmerer, and Garcia as a listing architect in the East of Saratoga as the architect of the buildings. Thank you for this additional time this evening. Since the last meeting, a lot of slides happened. What we have in this PowerPoint presentation, basically, we'll show you the neighborhood plan, which we updated with the help and the aidfulness of Masha and Elizabeth, who came up with some creative ideas, sent us back to do some additional work and to illustrate the plan that we have here tonight. In addition, I'm going to walk you through a quick history of the project from back from July 2018. Just show you how it's evolved, the concession to the applicants, we, the request of the plan, whatever is the forward year, the current year, have, have been laid to myself with how we'd like to improve and how it had been permitted to an extent that the applicant feels are benefits to the town, it makes it a better project. So what we have is, please, slide please. This is a neighborhood plan which was submitted after our meeting last Monday when the applicant, Natalie Delia, page Natural Resources Director, Masha and Elizabeth. uh, when the applicant, not even Delia, Kage, natural resources director, Masha and Elizabeth. And the major plan, change to this plan is, is the thirty-four units. But what you also see right on the side, on the front, is the preservation of five additional mature trees by sliding the road over and moving the house out of this location to the inside loop, and taking the other home and rotating it around to the side. You'll see on future slides that the three houses, the three existing trees that are within that proposed unit, number three, are our basic trees. They're no way ables, so all we did was look at all the good trees, kept them, and we placed the house where the bad tree were. All the other aspect from this point here, to that point, there, this T over the Y shape is what changed from that plan, the minor adjustments up there. As you know, when the development begins, it put on a grade, and the applicant becomes to an engineer and deciding what type of project they'd like to do. Uh, the first project for this location is a planned residential development. At the beginning, our client has prepared a by right plan, which is a conventional subdivision. It was, I mean, not a special permit requirement from the plan board. What it does show in a quick manner is a proposed subdivision road, cul-de-sac, or another cul-de-sac road being off of the frontage of Main Street. In addition, we have one, two, three, four, five lots or houses along Main Street, with a couple other new houses coming off of Highland. And so that totals twenty-one houses along this, this location, this layout, plus the improved non-required lot, which is already improved. Uh, so that was the basis of what the applicant looked at with us, and it made the decision to proceed with residential development, um, instead of this plan. This is back when I was in Stacey Biggery, uh, so for the last twenty-five years, I've worked this neighborhood in this area. Uh, so this plan was submitted in July two thousand eighteen. We had, the septic system was the front, we had a loop road, and we had a neighborhood park. It was denizement, it wasn't common open space like it is today. We had a driveway that came up and maintained the existing grades along this side perimeter with Center Village and the partages on Main Street. We had triflex, we had buildings that had two units closer to Main Street, and then we went down in the same similar manner to the lower level, but we had additional units. This was what MZO architects out of Stoneham, and basically what we had was the working where the A unit was more rectangle square, the B unit was a little deeper with a rectangular shape, and the C unit was smaller. So you did have that diversity of A, B, and C housing styles, and you had singles, doubles, and triplex. The common open space was along the back, and we had trail connecting and coming across along the edge of wetlands. So all the green space or common open space was mostly in the bag with some ribbons along the sides to, to mirror the body proper. Next. What did you just say?
One more?
Did you just say one? So this proceeded, okay, this was good, so that plan wasn't, we were asked to save some trees on the Friday, so we walked from Kimberherne in November two thousand eighteen, and we, the existing path conducts the homes to here. We looked at alternatives of how we can improve that, keep that loop feature, move the homes around to try to maintain the trees in this location. Again, the no way ables we use three is today are invasive, doesn't know way able, and it doesn't know way able to be along the frontage. This is, um, the trees that we were saving with the previous plan were this side sidewalk, and now, this was the best tree that Kim identified as A-plus, was improving or shouldn't be able over this location. And so with this November sidewalk plan, next, we proceeded to revise the plan to save some trees in the area and go down to our single entrance, a loop road at the bottom, a turnaround at the end, and then there was higher houses and lower, but beginning in the cut slope, I have to speak with Center Village. So we were asked to move the houses away at this location, and then we had one driveway, two driveways with four units on the side. Next. Located least for Sarah Stone. Uh, we went back and talked to staff again, and we said to the board that change needed to be made to the approach to this project. And so, right before Christmas two thousand eighteen, uh, least for Sarah's was brought on, and this is a representative, unit A, in different housing styles that are homeways for the neighborhood. Um, she was asked to walk the neighborhood, and she did, and this is the type of architecture that we, we become satisfied with while this project. Next. In March, we presented a plan that had one entry with the loop road that we discussed. The red marks indicate the grading, as the five have handicap accessibility for the entire site. That's required with the building code in the state regulations. So from the, from Main Street all the way down to the projects, you can either wheelchair or you can integrate the five to set. In addition, we have five set grades up to the path to Highland, and then we have the oval in the middle with open space, and open space in the back. In addition, the previous chairman was, uh, the special is where to provide additional one-car garages, so the B-one units, which were previously a twoplex with a B-two style, those green stripes represent the removal of six garages, so into, so in March two thousand thirteen, we added additional one-car garages. Next. In April, thirty-six units, we discussed this project on a conceptual level. Uh, we see positive feedback with the intent to go ahead with the formal design, showing the B-one units as a single one-car garage, the loop, common area community green, common open space, a king and tied in with the back of the park. Next. In October, we had additional presentation, and it was, um, found upon the width of the park here, and it was a consistent commentary about too many units, and can you do something to provide maintenance or maintain the trees on the frontage? So what we did in October after submitting this plan was, uh, we looked into moving the units. So we took out the two, the C-one unit and C-two unit here to go from thirty-six down to thirty-four units, which is one below your basic density. We moved the B-one unit over, slid the B-two down, and took these two units and slid them over, and created a plaza area so that they get a green connection from front to back in vegetation here. Next. We received additional comments, uh, that this was not preferred development, and could the applicant, again, look at this location for tree removal, or tree preservation, and also to a little bit of structural on the frontage? So what we did was, in November, we proceeded to the next step. We had a meeting last Monday with staff, and, um, it was something where it was at this point of which way was it gonna go, stay with the development or go back to the by right plan? The next day, I began working on this and, and realized through the recommendation of Elizabeth was to, can you look at this, create in the snow storage planes or the landscape plane? And when doing that, I realized that we could make some changes. So by removing the sidewalk on the left-hand side, sliding the road over five feet, it's important to keep the same setback on this side with the marquee residence, which everyone agrees. We were able to move this unit over to here and basically reshuffle the different units. So the unit that was here went here, that one back there, et cetera, so that we're able to maintain the same diversity of dwelling styles and open up and save those five trees that we spoke about with the invasives being in this location. Next. Masha liked it. Again, Masha liked it. It's, it, it sometimes takes hours of work, but it's, it's a great, um, time in one's life when you see that smile on her face as a planning director, um, over many years. Um, so what we have here represents the current plan that we're here to discuss today, and we're looking for your recommendations, the planning board. Not your approval, just your recommendation that this meets the certain criteria for us to proceed to the board of appeals next time. What you'll see on this rendering is, is the existing, the existing trees that are being saved, a large sugar maple, the beech tree that I, or A-plus from Kimberherne. The existing sidewalk that's here, we've got beech trees on both sides. Masha felt it was important to keep the oval, and these are the existing trees that we're already saving. In addition, we moved the mail center down to this location here, and we have a meandering path through from Highland over to Main. We elaborate more and open up more of a, a community area here. We'll have a little bit of oversized structure shed for controls for septic, which is now an eighty-seven bedroom design, along with, uh, opening space suits for, um, you know, typical neighborhood things. So what we have here is a plan that, upon approval, Kimberherne can update their landscape plan, and which is already excellent. And there was some questions about how can we maintain the feel of public park when some houses are close proximity? So in addition to having a double wide width of the park along those, all the frontage, we currently have one existing curb cut here today to a gravel. We're going to have one access when we're done. We had one access here, we're just gonna have one extra driveway on Highland Street when we're done with this project. So what we have also is, at each mark, which I'll show you later, we're gonna have monuments with tall mature bales, so you, you'll see every line of where what is common open space and what is a resident area. In addition, we have segments of fence at key locations. And every location was a bend in the line along the open space so that it's clear. And then, in between those segments, you'll have a living fence, so that you won't be feeling like you can't walk through the area, but it'll be clearly defined in public and private. This is the thirty-four unit plan ready that is been submitted in, as, basically evolved from last Tuesday, so within one week's time, we went from the previous plan to this. On the next slide, please? We still maintain the one-car garage selection, which is the D-style, the B-ones and the C-one, C-two units within the entire site. And then what you'll also see is Daniel Hayes Public Park. Uh, there was a question whether this would be public, yes it is. It will show, and we're available to signage to, to the way that, um, one would like. We have additional park benches, requests for bicycle racks, so all those additional, um, street furniture that your West Conference guys talk about. Uh, Kimberherne will have a meeting with the residents of the neighborhood to go over that in, in the side of lawn for a location. So what we also have is our common, our open space, which is open to the public. This is open space, using number two, which will be being made private, just as a buffer. And then the conservation area in the back will be using number two. Next. Public park, so this is basically zooming in on the entrance. So the, again, you can see that the park follows and maintains all the mature trees that are there today. In addition, here's the three locations of those knowing vehicles. There was another spruce tree that didn't need to really be mentioned. The dark markers are the monuments that you'll see, and the white little dashes of the fence. The entrance was, the sidewalk is flexible, uh, and things of that nature. And again, we squared this up to be parallel with Main Street and with Highland, just so there wasn't any confusion. And then we also trimmed it to the backside so that it's more defined, so that it's, it's a more of a typical shape. And then we gave around, and then the mail station would be off, would be on our way. Next. So what we have within the park, so the existing sidewalk is here, going to steps up to the two existing homes. The trees, we were saying, these two beech trees before, this one was dead to be removed, and these are scheduled to be removed with the old plan. Now those three trees will remain, and then you'll see this other tree over here that you think might be the one that would be, but I'll show you the next slide. Next. The park is spatial on Main Street. The fire hydrant's here, this tree in the, between the sidewalk and the pavement, and the one right behind it, annoying ables, so those are invasive and need to be removed. The gravel parking area is here with my leave-in, two hundred point two thousand miles. Still building. So what we have is, when you're looking in this direction, the trees that are currently on the side of the sidewalk remain. The other trees that are behind it will rain also. The backyard here is, you see a home site beginning back here, which has the additional screen. And your entrance is going to be down here for this car, as the application. So this entire area to remain exactly the same way it is, or you can have Kim add some additional plantings along the edge, if you like. Next. So this is the forty-inch sugar maple, this is to the right of the gravel parking area, that will remain. It's rather open in this location, so when we're kind of grazing over there, there weren't really any trees to save here. You'll see the stone wall that curves around towards Highland. We're keeping that wall, the houses will be removed, but I'll show you the trees staying on this location also. Next. Here's the wall, these trees that will walk the edge, and the overhead wires are here. Those two trees will remain. This will be a flat upper area of the park that can be also expanded upon and utilized in the future manner. Next. The bylaw. It's a good read, the emission poll, it reached a twenty-third. This is from that, and what this is, this figure twenty-seven, it identifies a quarter mile or half mile radius around West Conference seven. Our property is the yellow right there, it is highlighted as a residential plus the opportunity. That's why we're here today. Next. Just zooming in, again, West Concord, the site. So we're within this area, here's Highland, here's our site, existing home in the middle, and we're down the street here at the Haggan Willa Building. So this meets all the common criteria for spot growth, increased density, walkability to the train, uh, connectivity, walking in, in, being within the area that's preferred for this type of development. Next. The location plan, so we updated a couple of our plans, and this is the location plan of the cover sheet, and what it shows is the relationship of the park, which is in truly budding properties. Center Village is also a PRD. We previously, as you know, had open space all on the back in this location also, but it was preference to take the homes here, put them all back, and provide more open space along Main Street and maintain that public street product, which we've done. Two homes on Highland provide harmony and, and blend in with the two homes on this side of this location. A single-family home, one is there with this property, and multi-family blend in with this location also. Down here, it's very, it's much lower, so that it's just, um, it's basically not in view from this location here. Next. The layout plan, so what we have is an up-to-date calculation of the park area with the monuments, and we squared it up to give a little more room here, and we, we, the land was previously here. We, we sat down and, at the recommendation of Masha and the discussion with Delia, on how we can provide grading and, and very odds to make sure there's no future approachment, we've updated and provided some teardrop, uh, little landscape walls and patios. And at every, two of each home will be markers, so you'll have access along this whole loop. There'll be access extended over to the town land for the access facilities, and then there'll be access to this location here down to this common open space even too. So we have the park area, and we have conservation area. Then we have area along the perimeter that was previously found upon as common open space is now just backyards. Next. Existing conditions plan, just again, just to highlight, all of these locations, the trees are all in this location, and then the wall that we're saving in this location also, and then the edge of wetlands, which is confirmed, and then the body properties and the street scape and sidewalks. Next. Topographic plan, so this reflects the grading that would be required for this project. We have very level area, not much powder grading into, into the entrance area. We have same cut slope to protect in, in respect to the advantage of this location. It is basically flat and no, no change at all in elevation within this entire park area. We have just a minor cut, and the driveway goes up, we set the level out to the end of the path. And then we're going to basically have a side load, this house is ten feet off of the edge of the sidewalk, so it's pushed further this way, it's a side, it's a pump load, but it's on the side so that it minimizes and makes it a compact area with the mail center, the actual activity for that, and our development is hidden. And then the grading and the cut slope, which is, again, starting here for accessibility, is a cut along this side, but then we also have the trail going out this side. On the back, we redefine the edge of the common open space. We have pad more walkouts, and we have a little teardrop, and then the grading shows that each house will have a backyard area, but the priority is to be out with the public in this community group. Next. Different possibilities. I said this, and what this basically shows you is the dark green or all of this space represents twenty-six percent of the land. Twenty-five percent of this land can be a planned residential development, has to be that color. It can be along the back, like we started back in two thousand eighteen, or it can be some of the back, some of the front, based on the recommendations that we've received over the last year and a half. In addition, we have one of the accesses, and this is the additional common open, the regular open space that we have, and the exclusive use area that has been shaped and turned based on the architecture. Thank you. Oh, we go to the topographic plan, so what we're asked to do is break down the common open space into certain areas. So what you have here is an updated plan, and it shows the breakdown of what is the frontage area, what is the path area, and what is the grading area for the common open space for the park. And then the back, what is woods along this corner, it's always structured square, plus the woods that are outside the wetlands along the train tracks is in the wetland area. All the wetland filling along this edge is outside of the common open space now, because we've adjusted the line, as we speak, with Delia and Masha. In addition, we broke this, we trimmed off a couple areas here, and gave a little more of the sculpt back to these units, so that that area is a little bit smaller there. So again, you have woods that are retained, mature trees along the. So again, you have woods that are retained, mature trees along the property boundary, the cut slope for the grading for the houses, and then the buffer between the project and the Marquis property. And then this just shows out areas being sprayed, and then the open space. So that breaks it down for further discussions as requested. Next, I think that's going to get us to the end. So we, thanks staff for all the quick responses, and turn around to be prepared with what you actually have, and a planners report for what you're going to see tonight. We'll try to answer any questions now with that. But right now, I'll turn it over to the board to see if there are any questions.
All the board members, questions?
I just have a immediate clarifying question. So when I look at this perfect, if you go back to that.
Which plan do you want?
I think the.
Topographic.
Topographic, sure. Yeah, so that, this diagram, I guess, versus what I see over here, which is some green space theoretically behind the units in front of the commuter line rail. Like, is there actual connectivity or not? Or does it go all the way into the commuter rail line, I guess I would say? Over here, it looks like there's a bit of connectivity in the, in the physical map in front of, in front of us.
Okay. You refer to this location?
No, connecting the, the other PRDs, conservation space.
Over here?
Yeah.
Right now, there's future possibilities, and what after speaking with the trustee of the Junction Square, they prefer to remain neutral from the project at this time, but once it's all built and the Condom Association is fully running, if they wanted to come to them and talk about a future path, they're minimal soliciting. It's basically, it's private now, and it would take a lot of work with all of these et cetera to do that. So there is no physical connection at that location. And then there's a fence here along the edge of the townland, and that's going to remain. Have to talk with the staff, and again, there's areas, and so the connection over there can still occur. We're not going to prevent that from happening in the future, the documents will allow it. But at this time, there's recommendations to not have those connections.
And then are those private use areas behind those units that are against the MBTA grading?
Right, basically, go back to the common law line, and then the grade goes up a little five, 10.
But I guess the question is, could there be a path through there, from a, from a point of view of the use of the.
Or even like a wireless.
The path will be along our sidewalk system.
Okay. And then how much, how far is the distance to the property line from the corner of the building?
Basically, 20, 20 foot setback is required.
Okay, so it is at that, that limit?
Right, and then the angle, it's, you know, it's angled, so you get a greater setback, but the, the corners are at 20s.
Okay.
I'm going to remind the board to use the mics.
Other questions from the board?
Well, I have some questions. Thank you for that, thank you for that presentation. So the applicant submitted plans in November, that I think were, I understood to be the basis of deliberation at this meeting. And that showed, I thought it was a 34 unit plan, that is November 2019, that showed, it was like A1, A2, A3, A4 on the park. Is that where you?
Yes.
And so.
Go back to that?
No, I'll know, but where did that, so where did you put the other units? Because it's still 34 units, right?
Yes.
Or did you lose a unit?
No, we, we dropped.
Sorry.
It's back to that hour plan, basically, we added one, so they'll move these around.
That's, that's.
It's plus one of the minimum, minus one of the.
So I think, so I think we could walk through Elizabeth's report and talk about some areas that Elizabeth has flagged, or like my comments are mostly about open space, and so I can ask those questions now?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's, I, what I would see as a structure here is that we would do any questions, and then what I'd like to see is to turn to the public comment and then turn to deliberation.
Okay.
Because, you know, I think that we need to be fully informed when we're doing our deliberation, and I think going through the report would really be an aspect of doing that process, the deliberation process.
I have one more thing, sorry. Energy, the applicant, her number, we talked about energy conservation.
Yeah.
The code requires every building to be, or her's down to 55, to stretch any energy code, which is off the bat of town. At least 10 units will be down around the 36 number for her's rating, and with the combined aggregator of all the units being at 50 total for the entire project. So what you're going to have is a 10% reduction in energy savings from the 55 now to 50 on this site. And that will be through combination of something with solar, heat, pollution, and heating aspects to achieve those goals. And so that could, if you're not providing applicants in letter form, clarify in a second line. And then how old the problems. I forgot that.
Well, I think we may have more questions to, any more questions?
Yeah.
What, what is the heating for the other units planned to be?
Yeah, so it would be gassy.
Is there a reason you can't just do all air source heat pumps, given it's a strong direction of the town to go to electrical generation, or to electricity rather than natural gas?
So that's a good question. So we talked about this when we had the Wonka garage, it's dropped, and we talked about to get to 20 areas, it's a combination of the developer providing some of the public. So yes, every house has that potential, and it's going to be offered to every resident that wants to purchase a home. And so that they can purchase that initial cost in, in that gap.
So is, is the idea that, that the, that the units wouldn't be marketable if that cost was baked into the purchase price? Is that the good?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have an estimate about what the differential in cost is between a natural gas system and an air source heat system for the houses that wouldn't have the spec?
About 15,000.
One, one other very small question. The, the elevation lines there on this, on the, the west side.
Yes.
About how many feet is that? From the, from the top down to the, the flat portions of the yard?
We're at elevation 50, it's 50, 70 to 50, so it's a 20 foot drop, a little de loris drop down there.
20 foot slope. So do you, is, has your landscape architect looked at that idea of, you, you mentioned mature trees along the top of that slope, and I'm just wondering if, wouldn't you be digging, have to cut away a substantial portion of their, their root systems? It's hard to tell with the distances.
It's, it's 20 feet off the fence line, and some is smaller, one, one tree is actually down, working and half until, for a storm. So there are a couple of large trees, and we'll look at them, but it's, they'll be replaced.
Okay. And, and the same as, as, has Kim, or your, your landscape architect, maybe I'll save this question. Looked at the rearrangement in the front park area in relation to construction around those beach trees?
Yes, yes, I consider a sketch, and, and we would be updating our construction plan to stay within that area. It is, when we get to this area, this location is one, you know, we're removing a tree, because we don't think that will survive.
Okay. Thanks.
I'd like to go back to the heating source issue. Would it be possible to share the sort of background information and calculation that went into that $15,000 differential?
Well, I guess, that's sort of, we'll try to, we'll try to be a little more big picture. You know, it's something where you create a commitment, and we could spend time on that, but it's basically, you know, when her's greater, going through that, and we can't have ideas of the less, but it's.
Well, he's walking up. I mean, I understand that, but I think, you know, one of the common complaints that we've gotten from the community is about, about this, and, you know, if we're talking big picture, I'm sure many of these people would say that there's nothing bigger than the climate itself, so this is something we should be considering.
Most of the lowering her's rating is not the solar panels. The actual air source heat pumps generally do rely in comparison with the solar panels too. We have the solar people, we have the furries people, and we've got estimates like air source heat pumps, air source water tanks. And frankly, we're just not far along enough in our plans to get the whole picture. We don't even have a cat on our hands. So we're, we're doing the best we can, and we, we're just really not a financial group. The concession that we made was half a million dollars, just to take those eight to 10 houses down that level.
Okay, I, I understand that, but my question is about concessions that you've made and the money that you need to make. Mine is about the calculation that went into, and the information that went into that $15,000 differential. Are you able to share that?
You mean the estimate?
Yes.
I don't have it with me, but yes.
Okay. I look forward to that. Thank you.
And just one comment on the, the heat pumps versus the solar. So if you're probably aware, but following along, Concord is moving to 100% renewable power from the light plant. And when we look at, as a planning board, we, we often think about, well, do we want to have a solar requirement? And unfortunately, that can sometimes conflict with the desire to maintain mature trees in our community. And I'm guessing with the steeply, a, a, a lot that's deeply sloping facing north, could make a nice ski area, but maybe not a good solar site, right? So I, I, and this is one case where I would say, we're, given where CMLP is now and will be very soon, a focus on spending the resources on heat pumps versus solar panels, I think would be, would, would probably be the better.
But it doesn't, it doesn't do as much to the.
So it's not a question of efficiency as much as, you know.
Yeah, and I know we asked.
There's both, these, both factors, yeah.
There's also a factor of the S O C pumps don't work that well below zero.
Well, I have one, I've never gotten to do, Julie, so.
That was 20 years ago.
Well, okay. That's my piece. Thanks.
The bottom line is, we gave it best effort, do the best we can.
Other questions from the board?
I have some questions about open space. So I, I had some questions, and they were based on the old plan, so I'm just going to go through them and see what's still relevant. It's a huge improvement to, to lose that house in a quarter. Thank you. And quickly, what's the pathway supposed to be, what's the material for the pathway in the park?
Specifically, we use something called SCARPAC, and we're allowing to put an extra binder in if needed, but it's maybe accessible drains and so forth, but it would be asphalt or solid pavement.
So it's perfect?
Great.
And how is maintenance going to be handled in the park? Is there going to be an allowance for like, you know, sort of perpetuity to be funded by the Condomated Association or? So in terms of the board's deliberation on whether the common open space proposed meets the standards for quality and quantity under the bylaw, I, it's clear that it meets the climbing that's required, so it seems that we will need to have a discussion about the quality. So getting back to Haley's point about connectivity, leaving aside the issue of trails for a moment, and just looking at it from a habitat perspective, can you speak a little bit to the value of isolated wetlands before habitat, and I understand it's not mapless rare habitat, but for wildlife habitat generally? And whether there could be anything to actually provide even a more narrow corridor between the E-rays in the corner there and the total slope of the railroad and bakery? And then again, on the other side to connect back to the park, just to provide that connectivity? Because right now, we're isolating the isolated wetland even more than it already is from a habitat perspective. So can you speak to that a little bit, like, did you say, sorry, I'll let you answer, but did you say there's a fence now on that western line?
Yes, there's this four chailing fence beginning, 1.8, all the way to the back.
And it's like to sort of to the total slope or?
At the, at the property bottom, top slope, so.
But to, like a lot at the railroad, is it?
No, there's nothing along here, so there may be some fencing proposal on the century, we'll talk to Kim again. But it's, it's higher up, you know, these controls are going up higher, so the rails is higher in elevation, so it's, it's, you know, drop fast cars.
Is there a fence now between the conservation area on the west and the existing undeveloped area?
There's a fence along the century.
Okay, so can you speak to whether it would possible to establish even a narrow corridor to provide connectivity if you establish that the NRC wants a corridor moving into the conservation area for purposes of wildlife habitat?
The benefit of, this plan is stretching to providing recreation and conservation. There are other aspects that you see for wildlife that we've done in previous projects. We're not disturbing that area, so the fact is, is you look for wildlife today, it'll still be there tomorrow, so those benefits out of the, what exists. Opening up this area, still, wildlife can still travel through, they develop around the fence, it's absolutely true today, so we're not blocking that either. It's, it's available. We're not changing the fence per request of the others. And then over here, we're just, we're working to improve the entire project in respect to all the concentration between the town. And this is the feedback that we have. So as far as connectivity in the future, it can be down at this location here, over there, if that's a preferred path.
When I say connectivity, I'm talking about habitat and not public access trails.
Well, right, they can still go through here, so, so trees are staying here, and they'll, they'll be open also, and then with the segment of the wall, they can, while that's the town will.
Okay. With respect to like conservation restriction, and I don't know if these are.
Yeah, okay, that. Elizabeth, Delia and Elizabeth, and we, we talked about the table, and if you want to provide a feedback on that.
That's your question.
So people like, there'll be more, there'll be more conservation restriction, given the footprint of this project, so people like an open space restriction, there is a component to protect, and we'll do that in there that Elizabeth and Delia would like.
Which is? I mean, is it a restriction under NGL 184, section 30?
No, it will not, it will not be a formal conservation restriction. We do this for the horrible housing, it'll mark the capital C, capital R, which goes through the Natural Resources Commission, so that's a lot forward to executive office and environmental affairs. So it would be some other type of open space restriction to either be a condition of, as I noted in the staff report, a condition of the special permit, and then enforced in perpetuity as far as the special permit through the building commissioner. And we talked, we talked with Delia about the park. Typically, the Natural Resources Commission does not hold restrictions for that type of parkland, or formal parkland. It could be a restriction held by the select board or some other entity in town to hold that restriction. So.
Marsha Rasmus is the Director of Planning. It is similar to the open space restriction that exists on the 55 Church Street property. That whole slope next to what was Our Lady of Health of Christians Church, now the Concord Theater, is permanently protected as open space, and the town holds that restriction. So, so through the select board, so the town is able to keep it as open space, and something similar would be done here.
It holds it as a restriction as a condition of a special permit or as a?
Correct. As a condition of the special permit that allowed that structure to be subdivided. Correct. As a condition of the special permit that allowed that structure to be subdivided, yes.
So are we contemplating different types of restriction for the conservation area versus the public park?
Me, the wetland?
Yeah, the areas, yes. No.
Possibly, I mean, there definitely gonna be different restrictions as far as how they get utilized, and how they get used, and how they maintain.
Okay.
So that was part of the conversation that Delia had. The previous plan had that the common open space in the back, less than, you know, five feet from the rear of those dwellings. And so maintaining that as in its current state, that was her request, to see if they could make the exclusive use areas a little bit wider in that space, and define those uses for those dwellings along the back, so that there wouldn't be encroachment. The Natural Resources Commission has this issue with a lot of other PRDs where there's open space restrictions, and people end up encroaching into them. So that's why this plan, it shows a little bit wider for those units in the back, a more defined area for planting, fencing, and markings, saying that this is, you know, common open space in natural setting. You would have something different for the park area. It would be common open space, but a more maintained and more public use than what you would have in the back. So the restriction may be the same, but it's definitely going to identify the difference between the two.
The master key will also include the same language, so the crystal player at the registry will want to take attention out of those two spaces, and it'll be backed out by the documents for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Couple of questions, or at least one, but I see in the planner's report that related to the wetlands, that is it the Army Corps permit still required, or have you already gotten that?
It is required. We have the paperwork, so I'd love to see it now, definitely feel comfortable that the planners have seen that, so that'll be soon.
And then I read the October NRC memo that sort of noted that, you know, all runoff would remain on site within the isolated wetland, and that is the majority of the common open space in the parcel. Just was curious if, up until or perhaps this past week, have you addressed that in any way, or that comment in any way from their memo?
We're going to the December eighteenth meeting with the Natural Resources Commission, and she asked us to prepare response and teach you those questions for these ones. Water runs today down to the wetland, and water will run down there tomorrow, but we're maintaining the same rate, saving the volumes of less, so we're protecting the wetlands. Everything is staying on site, you know, reduced what's going to the highway. And that is what the street management, it's entirely zoned off along our property boundary, which is in the lawn area that will remain, so there's zero runoff heading towards the street.
So just to clarify, you said that with this PRD proposal, the impact on the wetlands would actually be reduced? Something to say?
Well, there's zero effect on the wetlands either. So it's, that's the requirement, so, oh, I shouldn't say totally, but it's fair enough. We are still wetlands, so it's a zero effect on the wetlands, you know, we're filling the wetlands up to the five thousand location, so. And then protect the rest.
Just one last question. Did you see the comment from the Health Department on the consideration of an alternative treatment unit?
Then we looked at that, and that is not a sustained Title V system, so that components are required, and we believe it's not necessary for this location. They brought up the four gas projects, and we discussed it, and the feedback that we got was, it wasn't entirely passing.
And so you're at, are you at ninety-nine hundred?
No.
Now it's ninety?
Eighty-seven meters, so we're eighty-seven bedrooms, and we dictated with the master key, and clearly it's felt out, which you have, based on the four floors.
So eighty-seven bedrooms gets you, what's your gallon per day?
It's like nine thousand four hundred, five hundred.
So you're at about ninety-five percent of the limit before you have to have a, have a alternative treatment unit?
No, we're actually ninety-five percent of the glass that we're allowed to fill. So it's, we're kind of at a different perception here, where, yes, if we go that much more, if we go five separated, right, it's a different setup, and this wouldn't look like this. So we're a lot of people denying we did, and the perception that we're trying to say it's certain medicine isn't true, so.
No, and I don't mean to imply that. Rather, I'm just thinking about all those, all those, the potential for bedrooms after you guys are done with the project, right? And whether, I'm not exactly sure what happens if eleven hundred, or, sorry, you know, eleven thousand gallons per day go into a septic system that is designed for, I presume the system is designed for, would it be ninety-four, ninety-four hundred, or is it ten thousand?
The tanks will remain the same size, whether it's the three bedrooms or not, and we might like lose a half, trash or something like that. So to answer your question is, the flows are already doubled when you design something from actual flows. Your reports and feedback through your studies are that it's only, there's not that many people living in a shop with this type of development. They're smaller than the body products, and we are confident that that will not exceed. If it does, we'll, you'll know on the water records, and the water health can say, you're over, you know, let's pop.
And I'm sorry, so you said that the system, that requirement of whatever it is, thousand gallons per day, the per gallon flow rate is a double of the estimate of what's actually typical use?
Correct, right, so each bedroom's about five, actually doubled to one ten for design.
But your system has to be built towards, to that number of ninety, ninety-six hundred, whatever.
Absolutely, and when you look at previous plans, we had more subject, we had more sewage flow going to the town sewer, when we had duplexes or triplexes, and each parcel per policy would allow up to a thousand gallons per day. So we took that three thousand, and we spread it across about ten units, and we had a smaller footprint, a sticky park along Main Street, which people didn't like. So we did try to add more houses to reduce the size of this septic system. We received negative feedback from the public works department. So as you worked towards your recommendations, maybe that aspect should look at also, you know, how do you provide the utilities closer to the septic to achieve goals?
Okay, thank you. It's a good explanation.
So my question is about the gross floor area collectively of the units. I saw the gross floor area by unit type, but I didn't understand what the gross gross floor area was of the development, of the units in the development, and so how that. I did see that there was some calculation that it does meet our dimensional requirements. In other words, the total most gross floor area of all the units is below the ratio required for residence seat. But I didn't get a sense of, you know, either what the average gross floor area of units is now that you've changed the mix, or the total. I mean, so you've got some units that are forty-six hundred square feet, you've got some that are twenty-nine hundred, but, you know, with the mix of units that. There was a memo, in the memo, there was a statement.
See value as the smallest units, two bedrooms, which we target by, you know, discussions at Montrier, pretty dark.
Right, so I see that, yeah, there's the, well, those are living space calculations, those aren't within the permit. So I'm talking about the gross floor area.
So basically add it all up and divide by thirty-four, and so there is.
Yeah, or add it all up and divide by eight point nine acres, and then what's the total, the per acre? Per quarter acre, actually, is what I'm curious about.
We can provide that.
So, yeah, because I mean, the idea is, while there are more units, the notion should be that, you know, the unit sizes on average are less than they would be in a, in a standard development, and so then collectively, you know, they don't end up creating far more volume than a, you know, as our bylaw says, without unduly increasing the density of the neighborhood.
So just to be clear, you talked about a primary subdivision, twenty-one feet.
Yeah.
Under section six two thirteen, the maximum quarter ratio, and the dimensional table and the calculation, of ten thousand square foot lot can have thirty-six hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Excluding basements, open and screened porches, and decks.
Yeah.
So the question is?
But some of those lots that would be carved out of a subdivision would be larger than a quarter acre, so they would potentially support a larger unit.
They could support.
But I'm just trying to get a gut sense of, okay, relative to that kind of development style.
So just so I understand, so yes, that calculation can be done?
Yeah, it seems like, I thought I saw in the report that it had been done, there just wasn't the detail, that's all.
So each, each exclusive use area?
Oh, there we go.
Three or five thousand square foot.
No, but are those living area square feet in this? Yeah, so what I'm looking for is gross floor, yeah, as we calculate it in the bylaw, it's.
Okay, so again, that would exclude basements?
Yes, that's true.
Open and screened porches and decks.
I know. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's just how, you know, to try to understand where we're ending up with this kind of development, that's all. Because I know I've heard cons to the effect of, well, these units are almost as big as you'd see in a subdivision, and with more of them, gosh, are we ending up with a whole lot of house, housing, you know, housing? So I'm just trying to get an objective sense of, especially the way our bylaw's written, the gross floor area calculations give you the visual impact, and so it would give you a comparative view relative to a standard pattern of development, what could be built, that's all. I'm sorry, it's very technical, but I think it will give an interesting bottom line, that's all.
We'll write you a number, we'll.
Yeah, and the one car garages help, because they will reduce that whole number.
Just to quick follow on to that, this past weekend, I think was the first time I'd seen reference to this potential four-bedroom units. And so can you just describe?
That's the longer, that's off to. We had three extra bedrooms, and we were ninety, so we were having the potential for that four bedrooms was three units, but that's the longer ready, seven bedrooms, so it'd be all two with three bedrooms for the clients.
Okay, yeah, because the way I saw it described anyways is that it would be an option anyways.
Correct, right, that was in the building design, the application center.
So the, it was gonna be in the attic, but like those attics won't be designed in that way anymore, but such that it could, that somebody could opt to, someone to finish in the basement?
Well, we'll be back to the deeding of eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven bedrooms in.
So that, you know, it'll be deeded, so. Okay, any other questions? All right, so I think we're ready for public comment. So just a couple of preliminary comments before our public comment. First of all, I think we have received an unprecedented number of letters in comments on this development through the history of all the iterations of design that we've seen, and especially in this last week. I just wanted to thank people for sending in their letters. I thought many of them were very thoughtful. We've got letters in favor, letters against, letters of ambiguous feelings, everything. And so what I want to be careful about, though, is that we have had many extensive sets of comments that have been made in prior meetings. Certainly, we do have before us tonight some substantial changes to the design. And so what I would hope to hear are comments related to the impact of the design changes, or open questions that you have that you do not feel have been discussed, and that need to be considered in our recommendation. I do want to say that, you know, given that we may have a lot of comments, that we need to be very succinct, and just imagine you're at a town meeting, and the kind of decorum we have at town meeting, as well as the brevity should be respected to the extent possible. So all of that said, we do have, I think, a presentation from a member of the public. So as one of the public comment, and I think just for the sake of efficiency, we'll just start there, and then we'll entertain comments from other members of the public. So please identify yourself, but if anyone is making a comment, should identify themselves and give their place of residence. Thanks very much.
Scott repeats on the two CCLs, make sure. I prepared a document which I sent to the planning board a while back, but I realized that you probably haven't had it, so I took the liberty of whipping up a few slides together, which I thought would go through some. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and for your service to the town. I know this is a challenging situation. I'm struck by the amount of earth that the developer wants to remove from the site. I understand that seventeen thousand seven, six hundred and twenty-five cubic yards of earth is over seventeen times the permitted volume, next word. I can easily visualize seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty-five cubic yards of earth, but this helps me. If you pile three feet of earth across a football field, that's five thousand three hundred and thirty-three cubic yards. And we're talking about seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty-five cubic yards for this special permit. So picture almost ten feet of earth across an entire football field. I didn't include the end zone in the calculation because the New England Patriots can't find it. With this consideration, should be given to the implications of removing the earth. One important area is fossil fuel emissions associated with earth moving. It's impossible to remove the earth without first removing and handling the trees, and then moving and loading the earth on trucks. We need to understand, calculate, and assess the impact of the emissions from these activities at the site on our butters, on neighbors, and on our town. We don't have the information to do that. However, we can understand and calculate the emissions from transporting the earth, the on-the-road portion of the total. Next, please. Six hundred and thirty truckloads of earth transported on Route sixty-two to engage loan, multiplied by two for round-truck trucks, means we'll have two thousand one hundred and forty-two miles, truck miles, within Concord at a minimum. That's the equivalent of driving from Concord to Casper, Wyoming. The developer estimates twenty-eight cubic yards of earth per truck, which differs from the twenty cubic yards stated by the town. This needs to be clarified, it's a significant change. Also, I don't count the truck travel outside of Concord, this is just within our town. Now, consider six hundred and thirty heavily loaded diesel trucks leaving the site, accelerating out on Route sixty-two. That's one truck leaving the site every ten minutes, for six hours a day, for seventeen days. Diesel emissions, which cause air pollution and contribute to climate change, are highest when the truck is loaded and accelerating, that is, when it's leaving the site on Route sixty-two. You're probably familiar with components of diesel emissions, they're a major contributor to smog, they're toxic, they contribute to acidification and climate change. The World Health Organization declares diesel exhaust as closely connected to humans. Particulate matter two point five is one thirtyth ex point of the human air. It penetrates deep into the lungs and even into the bloodstream. Earth transport can generate at least a kilogram of this material, which causes cardiovascular, muscular effects, and premature death. Next, please. Diesel emissions don't disperse quickly, in the absence of wind, they hang over the source. Some of the emissions settle nearby. The smog you see above cities, most of it comes from diesel emission. The smog you see above cities, most of it comes from diesel emissions. This concerns me because the site approximates schools and ride-out playgrounds, where people will be running around exerting themselves and breathing deeply. Anyone walking on Route sixty-two, certainly neighbors and butters will be impacted. Children running outside are assessed. Next, please. We need a lot more information for a making informed decision about the earth removal and its impacts. How will we offset these emissions? Who will monitor the emissions? What if the estimates of earth volume are wrong, or the destination of the removed earth changes, or the truck route changes through the town? Here's one that's dramatic, but I think we ought to consider. What will we do if, one day during the earth removal, the air ride-out and sound to be unhealthy? Close the field? When we stop the project once the trees are down and the earth is being bulldozed? Next, please. Seventeen times the amount of earth removal is an extraordinary request. I would hope the developer would fund an extraordinary analysis, and if granted, we should receive extraordinary benefits to the costs we all will endure. Thank you again for hearing me, and for your attention.
All right, others for public comment? I'll be going, please just go to the microphone.
Okay.
Again, town meeting rules. Yeah, they have the mic, yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Put your name and address into the microphone, please.
Okay, we'll do it.
Thank you.
We almost solved it, one eighty-eight Conestreet. I had a question. I reviewed the traffic plan, I presume that was paid for by the town, how the developer? I'm not sure, I couldn't, I read it coming home on the train, the G C traffic plan? It's a question, so I need an answer.
Yeah, you go ahead.
That's my question, who paid for the traffic plan?
Do you want the questions answered now, or do you want to...
Normally, we would answer questions collectively at the end.
All right, the only reason I raise it is just, if it was a dispassionate plan that was generated by a third party, that's one thing, but if the developer paid for the plan, I think that has to be disclosed, because I have concerns about the traffic. I've been taking the back route to the train for thirty years. There'll be an average low, low bar estimate of sixty-eight additional cars. Hyden Street has done its own deals, so there's no Egress or Hyden. Everything will be coming out of Main Street. So I just want to raise that, because I'm not sure if the traffic plan is... I don't know if we would...
Thank you.
My second question is, I'm more concerned is this back, sort of the back forty where the wetlands are, that is loaded with aquatic species that breed through their skin. And I know that a lot has been said about the stormwater and the runoff will all be contained on site, and that's a good thing, but if the condo association is not mandated to not use really, really green pest management, because right now, I would want to get into a whole discussion about the power of the pesticide lobby, but it is really big, and there's not a lot of state rules that apply. So unless there can be some constraints on what you use, and there's people want ones, people want plants, people want this and that, that all those aquatic species in that back forty that right now are all back there thinking everything's fine, they can just be bombarded with pesticides. I really feel like, I've lived here thirty years, and I first came here, I thought it was backwater, because I was from the city, and then I feel a lot of it. Now I feel like this turning back into the city, but there's not much I can do about that. This is one of the last parcels that's left in West Concord, it's got to be done right. And I don't know how many people have walked around Riverwalk and seen it. I think Riverwalk is done right.
Yeah.
I'm not against people living in my town, it's a great town, but those aquatic species, they have no voice except what we give them. We have an obligation to make sure that this development is not one that would be permitted in nineteen eighty-six, but rather one that's permitted in two thousand twenty-six, that protects and bird- raised in aquatic species, and that limits the amount of chemicals and toxins that are going to be generated and pushed into that ecosystem.
Thank you. Please, once again, town meeting rules applies, no expressions of... No, expressions of applause, boos, all that kind of thing. Thank you. Either way, yeah, it's up to you.
Jack Madigan, two one five Prairie Street. The concept that they have gone from thirty-six units down to thirty-four, I just wanted everyone to understand that previous to the thirty-six, they were providing one affordable unit in the grouping. They have now excluded that, okay? So now the thirty-four, the town will be down three affordable units that need to be made up elsewhere than the town. And I just wanted to make sure that the audience was aware of that, so that there will be no affordable units in this development anymore. Thank you.
Cynthia Katz, twenty Conan Street. I have a question about that front area park.
Can we, does the map, can we put the map up? Sorry, thank you. Just the cycling.
Thanks.
There you go. So they play. All right.
So I guess, I'm trying to figure out what is considered the public park, and my question is sort of twofold. These two units, how far back is the park considered to start? And what's the square footage of what's considered the park?
Okay, thank you.
It's laying down here. Hi, Dan Scapleton, twenty Conan, live with Cynthia. Two questions, the second one may just be a comment. The first question is, I didn't know, since the statutory speed limits changed after the traffic study was done, I didn't know if that changed some of the, obviously slower speeds can be better, but I didn't know if that affected the vehicle queuing. At Conan, we're already at capacity, so I was interested in that. And the second question was, I did, and I missed the meeting where they presented the earthquake construction, but I just saw the last presentation. And just note that a typical dump truck for, you know, a developed area on these streets like Concord is about ten to fourteen yards per truck. I think I saw a number of twenty-seven, so that makes a big difference for the number of vehicle trucks.
Hi, my name is Greg Higgins, fifty-one Cottage Lane. And I'm here tonight to mention an aspect of this neighborhood that has been disturbingly discussed, I think, at most of the meetings. I asked the petitioner if I could speak to that aspect tonight, as Simms asked Kim Camo and me to help them designing units that will fill market demands in the Concord market. We have attended these planning board meetings and think that the demand for proposed varied housing has had little attention. I've been involved in many town committees and currently in chair of the N R C. I'm speaking here only my capacity as a real estate expert on the subject of buyer demand, and in no way as a former current or current member of any committee. Between us, Kim and I, have over sixty years of experience in Concord real estate, both graduated from high school here and still live in town. It is the P R D aspect that will appeal to a wide spectrum of buyers. An A and R conventional development would be very homogeneous buyer pool, with a standard four-bedroom, two-plus-car garage homes on significantly larger scale, intended to cater to one segment of the market. Simms has listened to Lee Stone and us in designing units that we think will appeal. The downsizers wishing to stay in the area with a quest for master first-floor bedrooms. For many, it will be an intratown move. Older folks wanting to stay closer, to get closer to their families. Snowbirds wanting to maintain an anchor in Concord, but not head the headaches of fee simple ownership in large property. Separated partner wanting to stay close to children, the reality of our family structures. And those seeking variety within a neighborhood of new construction with its up-to-date amenities and manageable size, nearly unhurt us since Riverwalk. Energy-conscious buyers as an aspect getting more strongly sought after and rightfully so discussed this evening. And those wanting in-town living, easy walk to stores, restaurants, community activity, public transportation commuters, relocation buyers concerned about resale of older homes or larger homes in the event of, in the event of further transfer. And of course, those families wishing to seek excellent schooling for a child. We know the board has many aspects to consider when deliberating the P R D. We just want it known that the demand and need for current and future residents is strong for a proposal such as this, and demographics will vary greatly, creating a very diverse neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, Garrett Whitney, two ninety-six Heath Bridge Road. I want to thank the board for everything you do. This is not an easy job, position you're in. I have a general question to which there may be no answer, and I have a specific question, I'll end with the specific. The general one is this, how is the town saying no? Is there any way that the town can say no? We have a very complex system of bylaws, zoning regulations, et cetera, which constrain everybody in this room. You guys can only say certain things, you can only ask certain questions. We can only say certain things, we can only ask certain questions. But that question I just asked is one that apparently can't be asked. In response to that question, I would point out that Concord has already answered it. In two thousand eleven, we passed a sustainability warrant article, which is now law. The third point of that article said that Concord is committed to, these are the words, reduce encroachment on nature. When I looked up encroachment, by the way, it's not a popular word anymore, but it's popular in this room, I've noticed. So it doesn't say encroach nicely, it doesn't say encroach with a smart growth rubric, it doesn't say encroach in a manner that is fair to all parties. It doesn't say any of that, it says reduce encroachment, which does not mean reduce the rate of increase or any of that other stuff that we might imagine. We're supposed to be cutting back our footprint on nature, and the town has made that determination. Obviously, it's currently unenforceable, and that's why my first question is probably unanswerable. I'll leave it hanging there, I think we need an answer. To get specific, the special permit rules, section eleven point six, say this. Special permits should be granted by the board of the planning board, and I'll go quick, unless other criteria are otherwise specified herein involved, only upon the written determination of either the board as applicable, that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the public interest, the town, and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. Below that is a list of things that, criteria, and one of them, eleven point six point five, is impacts on the natural, on the natural environment. So, I want to add a couple of things. First one is that that, those adverse effects, it does not list adverse effects on the owner wishing to cash out and make a profit selling their land. That is not a criteria that should be considered by the board making special permit decisions. Its own adverse effects that will outweigh its beneficial impacts to the public interest, are there any? I would guess that if we held a vote in town meeting or at the polls, the town would reject this project easily. That's a guess, I could be wrong. But given the act of the public permits, it would appear to be so. The public interest to the town, is it beneficial to the town? Well, I don't know if it's the town. If it's not the people, who is it? And the neighborhood, same thing. So, I would say that the special permit has to be denied. It does not fit the criteria, this is something we don't want. We don't have the means to say no, except in this special period, in this special permit, and I think we should do that. So, that's what I have to say. One last question, which is very brief. I would ask the developer, what percentage of that plot gets completely untouched? In other words, not encroached upon? And I would appreciate an answer to that, thank you.
Good evening, Jane Blumberg, thirty-six Little Road. I too am concerned that none of these units are affordable. And the question I'd like to ask is, how much are the smallest, least expensive units going to go for roughly?
Ellen Quack, first, two oh six Prairie Street, I have two questions or maybe two comments. First, the comment about the quality versus the quantity of the open space. I think Sim said that they're at twenty-six percent now, and there was a topo map up there before, the common open space is number one. At least half of that space had really closed topo lines, so they're both words very steep. And I can't imagine that that's quality open space. Kids can't sled down it because they end up in the road or end up in somebody's yard. So I think if you took that away, they're less than twenty-five percent. So I would encourage the board to consider not the quality, but the quantity of the open spaces part of the P R D requirement, what?
The quality, not the quantity, I think.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant. You know what I meant, thank you very much. And the second was the heat pump. I just put in the heat pump, and I would say that it's not true that it's fifteen thousand dollars more than natural gas, and by the way, it's not just heat, it's cooling. So a heat pump doesn't just heat, it cools. So if you want to do a comparison, it has to be not only the natural gas heating, but the central air conditioning that it's displacing. So it probably is net equal, and given the Concord's energy greenhouse gas, you know, emissions for twenty twenty and twenty fifty, I would say to push the developer to include heat pumps on all units or solar panels would be great. Thank you.
Michael Amster, forty-four Prairie Street. I submitted a letter, but I thought it would be wise to hit some of the high points for this meeting. In the past couple of meetings, we heard from Simms that they didn't know how to satisfy the neighbors, other than their butters, and I don't remember ever a meeting or a qualitative meeting that involved the neighbors. It seems that it's still the intent is to try to put as much as possible into the, into the space so that they can, so that the building can be maximized. Haven't heard anything about the, anything from the Corps of Engineers or the D E P. Seems like before, before the project can even go forward, as it's planned, there needs to be some input from, from these regulatory agencies to see if any, to ensure that, that the activity is in fact legal. There's been a good, a good amount of discussion about the size of the dwellings and the garages and all that. But problem is, or a couple of problems is that the traffic on Route sixty-two is awful. Now, I think that it's important to understand that in the morning, especially around school time or rush hour, there's going to be a slug of, you know, twenty or thirty cars trying to get onto Route sixty-two. I don't know how that's going to happen, that's going to be a problem. And then, given the fact that there's only one way in and one way out, as accidents tend to happen at the wrong time, how is an emergency vehicle going to get into the development with only one way in and one way out? Bad enough that the traffic is a mess during the project, but all these huge vehicles moving up and down Route sixty-two, and you've got people crossing streets, you've got bicyclists, all sorts of people moving around, and that's going to be a problem for these people, the safety of people. And as a biker, bicyclist, bicycles and large trucks don't seem, don't seem to work too well as indicated by the truck-related fatalities in the state. as indicated by the truck-related fatalities in the state. We heard also that the project parking was going to be confined to the property. I'd like to know when we call when we start seeing construction vehicles parked in the thorough area that's already congested with parking. Along with the difficult traffic situation, there are other additional stresses on available town resources to include but not limited to the capacity of already overflowing local schools and the inventory of affordable housing that's already been discussed. As the gentleman before indicated, there are a number of requests for significant variances. In return for what? We haven't heard about anything that's going to really benefit the town of Concord. And I suspect that if this project were planned on the other side of Route 2, the discussion would be entirely different. There are a lot of unanswered questions. And quite honestly, to me, trust me, doesn't make me too comfortable with this discussion. This is, to the boards, this is really a legacy decision because for three years, we're going to see trucks and vehicles moving up and down Route 62 in addition to the normal traffic. And I hope that the boards will take this seriously as they do to protect the town and not let a bad situation exist for at least the next three years. And that's just during the construction and before the project is completed. And thank you for your service. I know how difficult this must be. Thank you.
Krista Collins, 55 Highland Street. And I just had a couple of comments about the open space and tree canopy. Concerns were raised about maintaining the mature trees in the southwest corner behind the town center village. And I have similar concerns about the northwest corner of the construction boundary with the wetlands. It's a very long line of disturbance. And I worry that even if the trees in that wetland are maintained, you know, during construction and shortly thereafter construction, what happens in two years when those root systems have been seriously compromised? The trees start to come down. We have flashier storms, we have more intense storms, more intense rainfall. And I know that, you know, I work for a conservation organization. We have a problem with a butters to conservation land being concerned about trees coming down. And I don't know if there's a mechanism to sort of come back two years later or something, like reform and spawn or something like that, where you might say, if trees have to come down because they were impacted during construction, is there a mechanism to make sure that they're replaced? Also, and this is really maybe more a question for staff and more than the applicant, but the trail connection through the property to Conant Street was something that was really important, I think, to a lot of the neighborhoods around. And I just not, I don't really understand why that's off the table now, why there's a fence along the boundary with the town conservation land. I understand the limitations of dealing with the private land on the east side, but I really would like to understand why that's not being considered anymore. Even if the right to do that and the trees maintained, I think that's important, but I'm just kind of curious. And then finally, pursuant to that comment about wildlife connectivity, I don't know if there's any way to put conditions in the permit, if it's approved, to limit fencing so that there is more ability for wildlife to pass on and through the property? Maybe limit the height of fence, maybe make sure they're not flush to the ground? Just have you, I guess. Thank you.
Can I go over there?
Either way.
Thank you. My name is Bob Markie. No one is more affected by this construction than us.
So can you give your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Your address, please?
Right there, oh, 1470 Main.
Thank you.
They've alluded to Mark, but you may have seen me in the paper the other day. They showed half of me. Next year, you'll see the other half. Couple of things. One, I've been a friend of Fay Day's for a long time. She's owned this property for a long time. She has the right to sell it. It's her right. I'm okay with that. Even though I'm very much affected by it. Two, a lot of stones have been thrown, and that's okay. I'll throw a few. But Jeff Ruda and Richard Ben, my house returns. To talk about how my property abuts the construction and how they can minimize the effect of that on our house. They've brought a horticulturist over to talk about various plants that they've put in to help us reduce the effect. Okay. Am I happy that a whole bunch of houses are going in next to me? No. But I have not the expertise to comment on those houses. That's up to the planning board and the zoning commission. Those are the folks that are supposed to make judgments as to the type of house that goes into Concord and doesn't fit the profile of our colonial town that existed for so long. I would like to think they do. But then I drive around town and I see some houses that are shocking when compared to the colonial atmosphere of Concord. Build your houses in phase progress if you choose to sell it. But please, planning board, take into consideration what is appropriate for our town? Not maximizing building space so that the tax dollars can go up and all that kind of stuff. No, no, no. It's our responsibility to make sure that we have appropriate housing on phased land. Thank you.
I'm Bertie Jenkins, and I live at 32 Stafford Char Lane. And Stafford Char Lane is a condominium complex that looks much like that. You come in Stafford Char Lane, and then there are units all around. It's impossible to get out onto Main Street many times of the day. And I know that your planning board is looking at the housing part of that. But every time there's something that comes up like that, we don't look at the traffic. And I don't know who it is that's responsible for that traffic. But if you put in 34 units, that's at least 34 cars or more, and that's taking Route 62, and it's going to be crazy. So please consider that.
Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green. I too have experienced living in such kind of condominium complex. And I wanted to echo the concern about landscape rules, which Concord Green does not have, to the detriment of the ecology. We have to, to fight climate change, decarbonize our energy supply, which means we go to electricity, which means that we've got to stop investing in infrastructure for fossil fuel projects, including new construction of buildings. Every time we have a new construction of any structure, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to save the future. Please, the technology exists to build your envelope, to passive house standards. And when you're doing it from brand-new construction, it's not much more expensive. But it will save multiple times the amount over the next hundred years that that building stands. I cannot support any new construction in the town of Concord that does not come up to that standard, which is not very expensive. Also, that is the way that the state of Massachusetts is going and the town of Massachusetts is going. We haven't maybe got the building codes up to there yet, but there is legislation being passed for stretch codes to passive house, net zero technology that's coming. And you could, as builders, take an opportunity to be in that market, which is the market of the future, by doing it here.
Hi, I'm Sean Saban. I'm at 1486 Main Street. I am one house away from the entrance to this complex. I question the transportation study that was done. This is listed as an ITA, ITE Land Use Code 210, single-family detached modular home dwelling unit, which requires a multiplier of 1.01 on vehicle use. And yet, they've only estimated 22 vehicles will be leaving that property during peak hours in the morning. I question the accuracy of that. I find it hard to believe that 34 units will only have 22 people leaving during peak hours. Anyone who lives on the street knows the traffic is horrendous and it gets worse every year. It's a bypass road for people who get backed up on two. The traffic is going to get that much worse. It's going to back up all the way from West Concord Town Center way past this development all the way back to Conant if this development goes in. And I also question the fact as to why the dirt removal truck traffic has been underestimated and not considered in the traffic study. Thank you.
Paul Winkler, 1414 Main Street, Abutter, right there at the corner of Highland. So I do have one question as an engineer for the applicant, has geothermal heat been considered since you're moving so much dirt here on the site as it is? Does that change the equation for geothermal? Comment as to traffic, I still maintain that most of the traffic that impacts all of us there on Main Street is coming from Maynard Stowe, Acton, and Points West. Very little of it is being generated, at least the new traffic is being generated in Concord. As was stated by Mr. Markey, the Highland Street group has been working with Simes and Mr. Ruda for coming up on two years now. And can't say it enough that modifications to the plan are driven by, and improvements to the plan are driven by their butters. And we very much appreciate that. That needs to be recognized. Am I sad that this property is being developed? Yes, I'm losing a beautiful park that I see every morning coming out my driveway. Would I prefer a rich benefactor buy this up and deed it to the town for perpetual open space? That would be my choice. Or at least the front half. They'll build whatever you want down the hill. I don't care. But as it's been almost two years, we've moved through the stages of grief of losing this resource, and we're now on to acceptance as well as apprehension of what could be built instead. The 21-unit moonscape McNanns or alternatively high-rise, you know, like we've seen in Concord Common, would be worse, as bad as many people see this plan. But anyway, given my gracious support. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Malodzenic, 392 Water Road. I have a few questions, and one of them revolves around the natural gas buildout that I believe needs to happen in order to hook up these units. I'm just curious as to what it costs to get a natural gas connection to these units? You know, who pays for that? And what is the cost per unit? It would just be interesting to know. I'm sure we're going to confront this natural gas buildout question again in Concord, and it would be really good to understand it in context of this project. I'm also wondering if district geothermal heat has been considered as a heating and cooling solution for these properties? That is a solution that is generally most efficient when being implemented in a new construction scenario like this. And it's even more efficient than air-source heat pumps. So I was wondering if it had been looked into at all. And then lastly, I just wanted to see, I say that I work at MASCEC, which is an economic development state agency that is concerned with transitioning Massachusetts to clean energy. And if our agency can be of any help in trying to figure out the best solution for decarbonizing the potential homes that are going to be built here, I'm happy to offer that support. Thank you.
Karen, just to simplify your access to my firm.
Hi, I'm Merrill Schwartz, 1471 Main Street, across the street of Abutter. I just wanted to speak to what I consider sort of the bottom line, which is what this project offers the town. I know that someone once mentioned that this was, PRDs were part of the long-range plan, and this was a perfect property for it. But quite honestly, this is just overkill. And it does nothing to benefit the whole town of Concord, which I think is going to feel the negative effects in a myriad of ways, which we've already heard about. But speaking to diversity, this does not present any new options for people in Concord. It's going to be more of the same, you know, at the price point of over $100 per unit. I see no benefit for us, no upside, and mostly downsides. I really want to thank the board for listening. And I want to be just cognizant of the fact that there is a huge outpouring of enthusiasm about West Concord, which has been generated. And I think the board should be aware of the fact that there are some very smart, active people in West Concord who have really thought about this and really analyzed what this does for us. And it isn't very positive. So I just want to say that a lot of good feeling has come as we've sort of delved into this whole question. I am not against PRDs. I think this was not generated by a feeling of helping Concord. I think this is nothing but a way to maximize, you know, the number of units and really increase the amount of money they can earn. I don't think it benefits Concord.
Bousha Cookman, 94 Hubbard Street, and representing mothers out front here in Concord. I just want to ask the board, how you could permit any new development that doesn't contribute to Concord meeting its greenhouse gas reduction goals and contribute to meeting the sustainability principles? They were voted in by town meeting. I think they need to be considered in every single decision that you make. And I just don't understand how you could permit something that doesn't contribute to reducing our carbon emissions through heating, through carbon sequestration, et cetera. And I would love to see a really imaginative, progressive type of project happen here. I think we can do it here in Concord, but this feels like business as usual. And I would just urge you to think about how you can make this a model instead of all of this disturbing, kind of, here we go again. So I beg you to really think hard about what the town So I beg you to really think hard about what the town has already voted in. We have a platform to look at. We have goals. And we have to figure out how to meet them. So thank you. I know it's a hard, it's a hard time we're all facing right now. And you're caught in crosshairs, and we've got to do the right thing, Mrs. Concord. Thank you.
Please, please withhold clapback. Thank you.
Derek Brown, 86 Highland Street, Abutter, today A and R law. I've lived there for 20 years. I've known this property. I've walked it. I've known it's going to be developed. I follow this process. We're looking at a property that has a right to be developed. As a board, I would ask you not to look at every little strict law we have on the books. If we do that, nothing would ever be developed. And I don't think that's the intent here. It's inside of walking distance to commuter rail. You have to look at what the alternatives are that could be developed here. And having seen the changes to the plan over the course of our discussions, have we, as a concrete community, improved the plan versus what it was originally proposed? Enough that it brings value to the neighborhood? And does it provide an alternative to a, you know, no permit required plan that's of value to the community? If we go into every save the earth by this single project, we can't do that. Think about it as a totality is my request for board. Thank you.
Rich Feely, 347 Lexington Road. The affordable housing issue's been brought up. But we're not going to see very many opportunities for PRD like this within walking distance of one of our rail stations. And if we lose this one and don't leverage maybe some units that don't have any cars or use a zipcar or something like that, and we have no affordable units, we've, as other speakers have pointed out, incurred the obligation to find three more affordable, four more affordable units when we don't have land to develop anyway. And this would be, I think, a remarkable opportunity to say, yeah, we like this idea of people living near public transport. But if we're going to have million-dollar units, the people that use public transport aren't going to buy them. Thank you.
I was hoping you could put up the slide with the A and R. I will, yes. I just want to see my slide before I identify myself. I'm Jeff Edgers from 50 Highland Street. And I just want to, Paul Winkler, my neighbor, said this very eloquently. But I just want to tell you, when I hear people talk about the benefits of the town of a PRD, I feel like people are weighing the benefit of the PRD plan versus what's there now, which is nothing. This is, to me, the benefit of the PRD. I look at this and I say, this is our nightmare. These are the houses that I see going up on Eppeland and Old Marlborough. I see houses like this all over town. They're enormous. They have, I don't know how many garages, but many more than I would have. And I don't see any space to walk on. I don't see any paths. I don't see anything. All I see is a clear-cut subdivision that has no benefit to us. And this is my fear. And that's why I would ask the question, you know, what do we have to benefit from PRD? Well, not having this.
Okay, seeing no one else at the microphone, I think now we will move to the next phase of the discussion, which is our committee deliberation. So how I intend to proceed with the, oh, actually, sorry. We need to get responses to the questions that were asked by the public. I'm sorry about that. So there were some questions asked for staff. There were also questions for the applicant. So do you want to start with the staff responses? And then we'll go to applicant responses?
Sure. I'm sure that Mr. Barry can answer a lot more questions than I have to. I'll head on to the staff to answer. A question regarding the traffic review. As allowed under Massey law, traffic per street be all boards, such as the planning board, Board of Appeals, Natural Resources Commission, has the ability to employ outside consultants that the applicant is required to fund. The applicant provides those funds directly to the town. The town goes out and hires a qualified consultant for whatever they're reviewing for this project. The town hired an outside consultant to review traffic and to review stormwater. This is considered a third-party consultant who is employed by the town. But under Massey law, the applicant is required to pay for that.
Thank you.
A general question on how does the town say no? The town can, should the planning board make a recommendation and the Natural Resources make a recommendation. The zoning board of appeals can't go through and make what a plan is to make to deny a special permit, as stated by the last speaker. In regards to the subdivision plan, the applicant were to present a subdivision plan that meets all of the requirements of the town subdivision rules and regulations. The board would more than likely be obligated to approve that plan. With that plan, it would be, the only landscaping that would be required would be street trees. The town would have the opportunity to reserve one lot for purposes of a park. That would be, and one lot for the purpose of affordable housing. The town would be required to pay fair market value for both of those within a three-year time period. There would be, there would be no review of the houses. There would be no design review of those stone houses, the styled houses, number of garages. The square footage of those homes, as I stated earlier, would be based on the formula for the maximum core area ratio. We will do-
And then what would be the energy-saving requirements on those by right houses?
The stretch code currently about to run the town under the building code.
There was a question- Wait a second. Also on that, would they still need some sort of variance for clearing the lot? If they were to level in the same way for a subdivision?
So they still would need a special permit for the earth removal, but not associated with the construction of the road, the subdivision road, or the installation of the utilities. If they require a special permit for it, if it's over 1,000 cubic yards. But again, that would not be for the subdivision. It would be for the individual, construction of the individual lots. So to meet the requirements under the subdivision rules and regulations, the roadway can have a maximum percentage of 8%. So likely a significant amount of grading would happen with the construction of the road to meet the percent requirement for the roadway and the sidewalk and the ADA requirements for the sidewalk. So the 1,000 cubic yard would be limited to each individual building lots, building a residential lot.
So they would need to get a special permit for each individual lot? Or for the subdivision as a whole?
No, they would not need a special permit for the subdivision as a whole under deserving bylaw for the construction of the roadway and the utilities associated with the subdivision. If an individual lot required to remove for more than 1,000 cubic yards for the construction of that individual dwelling, they would need to get a special permit for that individual lot.
Thank you.
As far as the Army Corps of Engineers, I think Mr. Mary's have been speak to the timing. But it's my understanding that you do not follow the Army Corps of Engineers' on-site account. This project does not require any review from DEP. As far as emergency vehicles, the roadway is 24 feet wide. And the fire department has reviewed this. And it would be no different for Calisac Road. As far as the emergency vehicles being able to access the site, some of the previous remissions of this, there was no continuous roof road. And that was one of the concerns. The fire department is not being able to go all the way around. If there was an accident or fire on one side, they would care which side of the road they drive on, going to get to the other side. So they requested that the roof road actually be activated. There was a question regarding if construction vehicles were not parking entirely within the site. That's a current condition for many projects that happen in town. The construction vehicles are not allowed to park on the roadway. And enforcement of that is through the police department, as it is with all of the construction projects. There was a question regarding the trail connection in back to the adjacent town lands and the fence. The chain link fence is existing. I'm not sure if it went in as part of Center Village. But it's existing from Main Street all the way to the railroad, the bottom of the slope of the railroad right away. As far as a trail, the Natural Resources Director did block from this site all the way towards Conan. And it was, in her opinion, that the actual construction of a formal trail would be very difficult with the existing slopes in that area. And the likelihood of the weapon on that side of, on that location is a whirlpool. And there would be significant issues with the potential for erosion and sediment into that farm pool. So she felt it would be very difficult to actually construct a formal trail. So I want to, there's always a possibility for an informal wandering path. But the minute you start looking at constructing a formal trail, you end up having to look at ADA issues with construction and slopes. So that was her opinion on that matter. A question was brought up regarding the fencing along the raft. It's my understanding, there's new plan, it is not a continuous solid fence. We're looking at sections of fence that would be poster rail, just smaller guard fences with breaks along the whole entire section on the back. So there would not be a continuous fence that would be involved, like at least along the back. We have to research more about who owns that chain link fence on the other side and how, when it is installed and whether that chain link fence can be removed. Just don't know enough about the history of it.
But the back section of that land is town land, correct? So presumably, there would be some opportunity between this site owner and the town to remove the fence if that-
And there was a question, there was a comment made about the use of pesticides within the comment made, the comment made in the division. This was a condition that the board actually discussed in the previous-
Right, we've already talked about it.
Development. That moment is, you know, the use of, I'm trying to remember what the exact number was. But that is something that the board has already recommended.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for the town?
There was a question regarding the park. The park in its current configuration is now approximately 1.16 acres. And I can bring up that slide that shows the whole, there's a slide that shows the exclusive use areas and where they end in relationship to the park. So I can bring that up if that's helpful.
I think, Elizabeth, I think I have it. So the isolated wetland is around 57,200 square feet? I think the question was how big the isolated wetland area was.
There was, I saw that, I thought it was 44,000 something.
The question had to do with the park and where the exclusive use areas ended. But that's a question about the question.
There was a question.
There was a statement regarding the changes in the statutory speed limits in town. The town did adopt, as Massey law allows, the point parking law on roads that are not otherwise posted. And the section of Main Street is a state highway, Route 62. And the speeds are limited by the state. So they are not posted at 25 miles an hour. Posted at that posted state speed. And that is what was used in the traffic study.
I'm sure you've said a couple things. Thank you Elizabeth. Very helpful. The West Concord Design Guidelines, which everyone knows about, recommends a minimum square footage for a park to be 20,000 square feet. The area of the park is basically 50,000. Plus, when you break down the said west gradient, west of the park in measure, it's 30,000 from Main Street looping around to Highland before you go down the trail or you cut the slope to put in the road. So that whole green space is the area. So the park is everything in green. So it's here, it's defined, monuments along the back and sidewalk. There'll be monuments around the side. It'll school the yellow block where they'll come down the edge of the road. There's over 220 millimeter fines along this park. There's over 100 feet separation, is 100 foot separation exactly between the sides? And we basically took the extension of the right ways to this quarter and made it to a rectangle shape. The left side of the units maintains the same setback if that was a conventional house spot. So there's a 15-foot requirement for setbacks to the side here. We have 17 feet. We have about 10 feet because we moved this around and made it and worked with the grading to make sure that that was acceptable with 20 feet off the back. And so there's still a little requirement for anything with line areas, real areas with PRD. But we try to hold the same status in the neighborhood, in areas that we're concerned. I think that reaches that. Regarding the overall quantities, Patriot Excavating Agency, in federal, they gave the estimate. I gave the CAD file, they ran the numbers. Most of the volume of material is topsoil or boom, which is a compact structure. So that's why the numbers higher than what Elizabeth gave was starting. So she gave a very good number to begin discussions. It was refined by Patriot Excavating and submitted with the trucking plan. So that's why, that's the difference in that number. I'm not sure. I think you hit about many things. We're acceptable to the, you know, pesticide green management practices. And those can all be marked into the Fund of Making Association documents. And that's traffic, traffic, encroachment, and native. So it's a trade-off. We have guided and shaped this. And we talked about the impossibility of the way to move the shape of the dark green space on this property. We believe this is a plan that is involved and that we'd like to consider and meets all the requirements. And we believe it does protect the back area as well. It's balanced with all the aspects, and we believe we achieve that from all accounts.
There was a question about the, whether geothermal is investigated as an energy option. You know, in your discussions, right, it looked like you looked at air source heat pumps versus natural gas, but maybe you haven't looked at geothermal.
So basically, the toolbox is full of options. And when it gets to time of construction, what would the best kind of desire at that time? Do you mean the numbers of 55 to 36?
Okay. Other, sorry, we have closed the public comment period.
This is a question, it's a question, I already answered the question.
I'm sorry. We need to, we're at 9:30 and we need to actually begin deliberation at some point. So I'd really rather continue with our process. Any other open questions that the board has noticed that you don't feel like you got answered or that you've noticed the public tonight answered?
The one I heard was what, what amount of the property will not be touched as far as the process?
That's right.
So I was referring to the plan that breaks out the open space, which showed the areas that would be, so we solve it and then just add those together.
Well, so I think that the thing is, what is not affected by grading out of those areas? For example, or built structures?
Well, it's the isolated wetland, right? It's 57,200.
Yeah, and then also, I guess there's a section of the park that perhaps is not being disturbed, right?
So this area along Center Village is undisturbed. He's a square footage to the left. The area entirely within open space season two is undisturbed, 53,000. And then this, majority of this park area is undisturbed. Only thing we're disturbed with is where in the past. So everything else is staying the same. So everything else is staying the same, minus this area which is grading. And then to shape the path. So whatever the square footage is, about 30, 50, you're over a couple acres. Everything else would be, is graded to accessibility standards and to meet the goals of all the aspects of this plan.
So pardon me, so we lost 4,000 square feet out of there, out of the isolated wetland area?
Well, I would disagree with loss. What we did was...
Well, it used to be 57,000.
I knew that question would come up, exactly.
Well, I wouldn't, I actually wouldn't have known that, because I can't hardly read that. And we didn't receive a summary of what the changes were from the November to this site.
My apologies, it was a quick time slot and I think we did a tremendous job.
You did do a tremendous job. Continue, say what you're gonna say, sorry.
I can reset the clock, you know. It was 1,002 days since I got a company. But anyways, what I can say is, oh, I lost track of that. You asked about the square footage. Oh. When we sat down with Daniel and Masha, when we looked at the overall, everything of the plan, we added land that was common open spaces to exclusive use areas to get defined line and provide defined park areas. And we also squared up some areas in there. So we wanted 4,000 square feet back, we can trim off some edges and we put it back.
I don't know if I do or not, but what's your, what's your total? So what, is your total square footage that you're for common open space now?
It's over, it's over 100, about 107, maybe 97,000. And we're over 107,000 with the two guys together, I believe.
There's a memo that summarizes it, that's actually on our page, not on the ZBA page.
Well, the memo is written by, my memo?
No, this memo that, that showed, that outlines all the open spaces and says, basically, now, this area on the left and the area in the middle are no longer being counted towards the 25%, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's right. And it's based on the November planner. You're saying it's not accurate anymore? Well, I don't know.
Can we just clarify? The area on the left is not included in that open space calculation, correct?
Correct. I guess what we're trying to get at is, what's the total, grand total of open spaces, period? And then what is the common open space total? And then both as a percentage and acreage or square footage?
I referred you to the law, the location plan, the top box, really applies table.
Yeah.
So the only common open space are either 1, 2, which is the park on the left, which is approximately 4,000, which is 26%.
26%.
I think this might be a good, a good point to transition. I have a couple of points to, to bring up. So for me, looking at this, like, one, yes, we've come a long way over the past 18 months of, of looking at this. But I keep coming back to what the PRD is supposed to be. And again, in the second sentence in the bylaws, it states, "It is intended to encourage the conservation of open space while at the same time providing for a mixture and diversity of housing types in the town at a somewhat greater dwelling unit densities." So I want to take each of those two points in turn on this specific, I lose that. In this specific development. So in the common open space, you're saying there's 26% of common open space, right?
Yes.
And you actually, I'm gonna quote you. You said, "When you subtract out the slope side of the front park area, you're left with approximately 30,000 square feet of park space." Is that correct? Did I hear you correctly the first time?
It's on the plan, yes. We're gonna have to break down the percentage, that's what it is.
So on that, I want to come back to what's also in the bylaw here. In section 10.2.9.1, it says, "The common space shall have a shape, dimension, character, and location suitable to assure its use for park, recreation, conservation, or agricultural purposes." Can you tell me what that, we agree approximately one quarter of that front park part there that is slope is either being used for recreation, conservation, I assume not agriculture? So what, what do you see that portion of the common open space fitting the definition that's in here?
So a park would initiate provides, also, the benefit of the slope is two things. One is for the accessibility of the bottom half of the two access required. Secondly, when you read some other guidance, where it is, it says that change in the block could actually benefit a park because it provides a barrier or separation between private space and public space. So what you have there is basically, when you enter that park, you look at that wall behind you, that's the bar where it slopes down. So you have this curtain closed behind, in front of you, so that it's, it's a better experience. So all I can refer you to is, in 2018, all the green spaces in the back, nice rectangular shape, all level, walk back and forth all you want. Or we can bring half of it to the front, where the park is 50,000 square feet. It's five times, which is five times the size of a typical lot in your town.
Well, that's, that's great. That's not really answering my question. Because if you remove that portion, that you haven't really answered what its, its proposed use is based on the guidelines here.
It's proposed as part of a park, it is part of a park.
I'm asking, does it meet it for recreation, conservation, or agriculture? Without that portion, you're not at the 25% requirement for common open space.
So it's layers should develop for active recreation, use playing fields, playgrounds, and neighborhood parks. So it's a neighborhood park, like the simple is a neighborhood park.
How do you envision that slope? Actually, let's back up a second. Can you remind me, we've talked about this before. Can you remind me and the rest of the people what the slope is? What the length and change in width?
Right, it's a cut slope. If you change the slide, it's probably over 10, maybe 2. It's 1, it's 156 no matter where you are on the public road. So our starting point is the same no matter where you begin from the pavement. We go down to all 146 at this location, once we make it so that you can walk down there or go over here. So that, that cut right there is a typical cut slope. And we originally had a path that went through there that provided a loop. But there was, the decision was that that area that's flat as a payake was more beneficial for the neighborhood park. So if you're asking, what does this benefit? Well, it helps, this area helps the path down to there. So if you didn't want the path there, then we could eliminate that slope and just be existing woods, so.
I think we're talking past each other. I understand why you need to move things there to have that there. I'm asking you what the use of that slope is in terms of counting for the common open space? How will that space be used toward that open space?
It's part of, causes, part of natural, it'll be relandscapes. It'll be part of the, the benefit of the landscape around the park, around the area that's already open. I, I don't know how to answer that question because the park isn't defined. And I believe it is a, an area that, if you're looking to discount that as being part of the common open space, I would disagree with that. I think it's a component.
I also want to maybe kind of step back a little bit on the, our deliberation process. We, we have several sections of the bylaw that we need to go through and that we need to get the board's sense to provide guidance to Elizabeth about the preparation of the recommendation report. I do know that, however, that probably the most critical issue that has been raised by the board members at least has been this question of the amount and configuration and usefulness of the open space. And I do know that, I mean, there clearly have been significant changes in this plan. So I'm okay with, let's maybe close the loop on this one issue. But then I want to step back and look at the earth removal section, 7.5, where we have to deliberate. And then go to section 10, you know, and, and really get a, a comprehensive set of inputs to Elizabeth, okay?
So I'm, I'm also respectful of the board's time.
Yes, it's 9:40.
Yeah, it's, no, 20 minutes, 10.
Yeah.
So you do have, okay, next Tuesday. You currently just have, you're done with that, you can continue your deliberations the next Tuesday. And I can easily come around with a recommendation for the board to review for your chance.
January 7th meeting. What do people think?
That would provide more, more time to...
To digest this plan. I mean, actually, that's the other thing, of course, is that, I mean, I really admire everybody's flexibility and willingness to turn things around really fast. And yet, on the other hand, I do think that we've been kind of deer in the headlights here with this thing, trying to catch up on it as much as we can. And it would be great to get another week of time. That said, I also want to respect the public's time and everybody else's time that, you know, we're, there's a lot of meetings, people have had to show up, not just us, but everybody else.
Sadly, the, the board will...
We're gonna meet next week anyway.
Well, whether, whether you will be criticized whether you stay here till 12 o'clock tonight and stay too long, or whether you move forward too slow, or you move forward too fast. So I think the board needs to...
Well, there's snow falling pretty soon out west, yes. Okay.
So, so, let's see. So if, if we did deliberate tonight, if we did deliberate tonight, we would, we would request that you prepare the recommendation. Could you do that knowing? And then we would...
No, no, this would be for this January 7th regardless.
Anyways.
Yeah.
Okay, so we perhaps, so the applicant, they might be, they might draw, they might not like that.
Well, so, so the board has closed public comment period. The board has deliberated on the information on those that provided to them, so.
I think it's a more narrow process from here going forward.
Fair enough. Well, I have some ideas on conditions that I, I might even would request the applicants input on. Maybe here tonight. But I'm just thinking that would give more time to kind of work out some, but.
I also, of course, wonder about, well then, do we have, do we have other design iteration?
No.
Presumably, we're done with design iterations at this stage and we're evaluating the proposal, the sort of...
Okay, well, my point is just to do it tonight, everyone's here. But if they're like, we're gonna complain more, we have to stay up late, then let's have a showing.
So other people, members of the board, what do you feel?
Let's do it. I mean, we're all here, I'd like to make some forward progress. And I'd like to see how far we get.
How far we get, okay. Are there any other strong opinions either way? Okay.
I mean, if, if we don't get to a satisfactory 3.4 point where we like, we need more time to digest it, then I hope we can do that.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna plow ahead. And should I now just step back to section 7.5? We will work through it in order. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Here we go. So, very nice, you have your yellow copy of the zoning bylaw handy. And so the very first thing that we would need to look at in section 7.5 are three different things that we need to determine. Okay, so the first is weather. And so this is on the subject of earth removal. Okay, yes.
So the board's recommendation will be about, you know, section 10?
We're not weighing in on the earth removal?
We're not required.
That's why I was talking about that as...
Sorry, the board, yeah. I, I guess I was lost by the board, okay? I thought that we...
The planning board is not...
Okay. So we do not weigh in on the earth removal plan?
No, hold on, but it says that we do.
That the volume proposed for removal does not exceed the minimum practical removal required to accomplish the construction development or improvement?
It's, it's listed here at the top for...
Well, it's the, they're applying for a special permit and a variance. We don't, we don't weigh in, for example, on the variance at all.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
And, and so our main job is to create the report under section 10. But I also thought that in this particular application, since there was the earth removal...
Well, I have some recommendations on earth removal.
So...
That may be practical.
Yeah, well, we do need to, if you look at section 10, the first paragraph, there's relevant, there's relevant section there which says that...
For the sake of order of operations, would it not make sense to do section 10 first? If they don't meet the PRD requirements, then the earth removal is a moot point.
Okay.
To, to answer, so part of the development of the PRD, you know, the requirements, the information that the applicant provided regarding, you know, the trucking and all of those, those components of earth removal are part of, of the PRD. But there's no requirement that the planning board provide, or feels on those three.
But it's in your report, though.
Your report does address those points. That's also partly why I, it's, you know, the planner's report was covering those points.
Yes, so the board can have an understanding of, of all of those items of...
Okay, so maybe let's...
You know, the specific, specification for verified registered professional engineer that deal with, what is it, A, B, C, and D? So that if you had specific conditions regarding that process of earth removal.
If we did, may we develop conditions under 7.5 or not?
You can, you can develop recommended, recommended conditions of removal for this special permit dealing with the, dealing with the earth removal, dealing with the, all the other elements of the PRD. But the planning board, different than the PRD, the planning board is actually making a recommendation on the issuance of that special permit.
Okay, got it.
The planning board is not required to make a recommendation on the issuance of the special permit for the earth removal.
Thank you, okay.
All right.
I mean, to me, the reason that earth removal is relevant is because if you have to remove that much earth, perhaps the site is not suitable for the development. That's, that's what I'm thinking about when I'm thinking about earth removal.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and start with section 10. So I think that we can skip through sections 10, 2, 1, minimum tract size, we already determined that, maximum permissible density, 10 dot 2 dot 2. But we do need a discussion on 10, 2, 3, diversity of dwelling units. In particular, the current proposal has adjusted the number of types of units. So we need to determine whether the diversity criteria for dwelling units is met. And that means the number of bedrooms. There's diversity in the number of bedrooms, there's a diversity in the price or rental rates. And there are two or three styles of units, which include single family, two family, or multi-family. So comments from the board?
Yeah, so I was looking at the new counts and square footage for each one of them. I just thought I would put out there that the current average square foot per unit is 4,144 square feet. The top two, number of units are approximately, well, they are more than 4,500 square unit, 4,500 square feet and comprise more than 50% of the units being sold or being developed. So about 65% of the units are above 4,000 square feet in total. So I would say that there is not really a diversity of units here. Of those units, A1 and A3 are mere images of each other. So I'll start off with no. There is not a diversity of units here.
Other views on diversity of the units?
That makes, that makes sense. So if that's the case, and we say we don't think this is a diverse mix, but we have a recommendation for what we think would be, is that what would go into the report?
That's what we can do.
Okay.
So we can state that we don't feel that the criteria is met. But what would we agree would be meeting that criteria?
So Nate, would you want to suggest, would you want to suggest what you think would be?
To the ZBA.
So, so one thing I come to with the diversity of units is, not just the size, but the sale point. Greg Higgins is still here. Ah, you are back here. I don't know if you would be willing to comment on this.
You can.
You can, okay. But we, we've seen in one of the earlier revisions, I don't know if it was in this one, that the range of unit prices was somewhere between 780,000 on the low end to 1.5 million on the high end. So, again, going back to, you know, 65% plus are...
Yeah.
That 65% plus or 4,000 plus square feet, you know, were closer to that 1.5 estimate, which I think is being downplayed quite a bit in terms of the dollar figure for that. And, you know, I, I think what, what the developer may have been trying to do here is, there's a few units E and units C2, of which there are four in total, that are considerably lower than the average, and I think that's, you know, they just basically threw in four to, to try and sell it as those are the diversity of units. But again, that, you know, with the rest of them basically hovering at or above 4,000 square feet, I just don't think we're, we're at a diverse set of units, in price or size.
Maybe state something to counter that. I, I kind of wish we'd started with section 10.1, whether we're meeting the purpose, but maybe we'll come back to that.
That's a good wrap-up.
Overarching conversation, so, on diversity, I've been thinking a lot about this. The criteria of diversity, it's, it's not size per se, it's number of bedrooms, there is a diverse number of bedrooms. It's the price, the number, we're saying 1.5, but I think the numbers, we've got in the report are 790,000 to 1.15 million. So, there's a, there's a, there is a delta in price between the units, I think they'll, I agree, they will mostly be on the high end. And then there's a mixture of style, styles, but one of the things we hear about a lot is the cost. And I know as a planning board, we talk a lot about how we get capital, lowercase of a, affordable housing, how we fill in that missing middle, and what, what does affordable housing mean in this town? And I'm also in the community preservation committee, is, you know, so, we look at the affordable question a lot. And, I mean, you know, 1.12, 1.150 sounds quite expensive. I believe that's roughly, it's maybe slightly over the median price.
Slightly over the median.
Very slightly, so, so the 790 is below that, but more importantly, somebody from the affordable housing community was presenting to the CPC recently, new construction prices, and, and which are primarily tear downs and conquered. The, the figure I had, basically, the, the number she presented, which was probably based on data as recently as 2018, was more about 1.5 million. So, oddly, compared to all the other alternative forms of development we're seeing right now, predominantly in town, these numbers, these actually are more affordable than what's being built. And, and whether that meets diversity criteria, I'm not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say definitively, but I just wanted to point that out, because, because I think a lot of people think the price is essentially unaffordable, but it's, it's under the median.
If they're sold for that amount?
Sure, yeah, but, and if our median stays the same.
Kristin, you got comments? All right, so, I think my comments on this were, you know, maybe one of the ways in which the plan has changed is there originally were duplex units. I think that there was a greater mix of unit types in the past, and slowly, that mix has dwindled. And so, now that there are only four duplex units. I actually think that the, the citing of the duplex units is very good. I mean, I think that, you know, it's, it's cleverly laid out, but I actually was a little disappointed because I was really pleased with Elise Stone's design for those kind of catty-corner duplexes, where, you know, the facade is not presenting a bunch of garages in the same direction. And I don't see that really being exploited much, even though I think it's a fantastic design in, in the layout here. And in fact, the use of additional duplexes, you know, would help to, can, you know, create greater density. So, that would be my recommendation. I would say, you know, from a, we just had a recent PRD in which, you know, we identified that it very minimally met the diversity requirements, but it was only a four-unit development, so diversity was very difficult to quantify. With a 34-unit development, diversity is a much more mathematical opportunity, you know, and with just four units being of a different type, it seems very below the minimum of diversity, from, from at least the intent of the bylaw, I think.
And when you say create, opportunity to create greater density with the more duplexes, you, you mean the increase of open space?
Right, exactly, lower footprint is what I should say.
So, I, just to go back historically, the previous versions had more duplexes, and the applicant has asked to split them up, so that they wouldn't have, there would be less pavement expanses, less garage fronts.
Well, that was when there were quadruple garages.
So, there was also, in the back, there was a two-part garage and a one-part garage, so, I... If it's only having garage, you know, style homes where the garages aren't together, so there's, I mean, there's just been different iterations that the board can look back and try and find that balance.
Yeah, other comments on unit diversity? For input to Elizabeth. Okay. Sorry, yeah.
Are we trying to reach a conclusion right now, or are we just commenting?
Well, I think that it would be good for us to have a consensus point of view. If there's, again, I think I've heard a little bit of dissonance in terms of, first of all, the unit size being too large overall, the idea that the actual price points are more affordable, especially relative to other new development, and then just that the unit, the diversity of unit types is perhaps not as much as should be, identified by the term diversity.
Just to clarify, in the immediate neighborhood, as examples of new construction, I don't think we've seen anything in the price point that they're talking about for the size that they're talking about. I was just looking, there's ones straight across the street that are smaller than the largest ones, again, above the average that you are going to be having, that are $300,000 more. So, we're talking about 32, 3300 square foot homes across the street. And you're talking about ones that are 4,500 square feet costing $300,000 less.
So, directly across the street?
I'm sorry.
Not, not just directly across the street, in the immediate area, within a quarter mile.
So, so, so the board is...
We're, right, and we're deliberating.
And you're deliberating?
Yeah.
You're not.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Okay.
So, so my, my, my point for saying that is that it may be artificially lowering the price for our view to give a more favorable view of what will be available. But when it comes time for those to actually come onto the market, you might see a much higher price.
So, what should be our input to Elizabeth, diversity of quality?
Well, I agree, I mean, it is, you know, speculation for where these prices can come in when the time comes, but I...
And always will be.
Yeah, I do agree with your position on, sort of... From my perspective, it kind of goes hand in hand with the quality of open space. But I, I know it is unfortunate that it sounds like we moved away from duplexes, but to your point, if we had more clustering and duplexes, just clustering in general, then that would increase that diversity from that perspective and allow for greater quality of open space.
Okay. Is that a consensus point of view, or is that just me and Haley? That we feel that there need to be, to achieve diversity, there need to be more duplex units that would provide, you know, smaller footprint and better opportunities for the open space that's being provided.
While not increasing the total number of...
Without, right, without having to...
I, my personal opinion is that we should leave it alone.
Leave it alone?
Yeah.
That there is adequate diversity being provided?
Yes, yeah.
And both in these three, three criteria, unit types, unit size, and price.
Yeah, especially relative to...
To the surrounding neighborhood.
The standard comfort build.
Other views, Alan?
I think the benefit of open space is having some more, I disagree with you. Having some more, bringing some houses closer to each other. Basically, duplexes are better to open space for, which is, I think that's more driving, more critical, I think, in our discussion. I think in overall discussion, that's why.
So, what do you think about, have this discussion very beneficial? What do you think about having these discussions now, continuing on to the other points before making even...
Sure.
Developing a consensus?
Sure, that's fine, okay. All right, so, let's move on to the next step.
Some of these, I know where we're getting the design, we're stopping talking about the design, but a lot of these discussions go back to the design, so I don't know how we come dealing with that. For example, we would talk about more duplexes and more open space, so that's designed, right?
Sure, but...
So, I don't know, is...
Wait, why are we not talking about the design? Are we not talking about the design?
No, as you said, we're not talking about design anymore.
Well, I think what we're talking about are the different criteria that need to go in our report.
Right, okay.
And so, they may touch upon design at some point, but what I'd like to do is to try to just go into these particular criteria that we need to, you know, deliberate on. Okay, so, there are no low-income or affordable units, so those sections don't apply. That exterior design, now that's all about affordable units, okay.
I think 10, 2, 9.
Yeah, so, wait, we could skip all the rest, the front and just side yard requirements, the access to the tract, I think we've described about that. Height is not in our purview, the variance for height, residential, area of residential development, we've gotten calculations for that. Common open space, 10, 2, 9, okay.
Can I, I have an idea.
All right.
And it's...
And 10, 2, 9, 1.
I want to ask Jeff if it will sell us the conservation restriction on those units, EUA 1, 2, 3 in the park. Instead of buying a $10 million property, let's just buy him out of those EUAs.
Who?
Well, we don't have a budget. We, we don't... As a, as a planning board, we don't, we don't have...
Like, let's think about it, so, this not in the scope we're doing here?
Right.
Let me just put it out there, I think it's a great idea, let's do it, continue.
All right.
And, and your point would be that if you could preserve more of the space, then, then more, there would be more satisfactory?
Well, my point is that that would be awesome, hard.
All right, so, let's move on. So, what we're trying to do here is, first of all, determine that the common open space is equal to at least 25% of the total area of the PRD tracks, and then at least 50% of the area of the common open space is upland. And so, this is what Nathan was pressing on, and I think that we need to, again, get the views of the board as to what the open space entails. I, I have to say, Nathan, from, from my point of view, I mean, when I'm in Central Park, you know, there's some pretty steep hills in Central Park, and even areas where there are roads that have cut off the steep slopes of, of Central Park Hills. But it's still, the size of Central Park is still includes those areas. So, I guess, even though, you know, you have a park and it includes a steep slope, it's still a park.
We're not, we're not building Central Park, and we have definitions of what would go into the scope and defines what's allowed.
Yeah, okay.
My question, which I still have not gotten answered to, is what use that cliff is toward the portion of the park? There is a, there's a list of aspects here that go down, and we could say, does it meet this criteria?
I don't think every square foot has to meet one of the criteria. I think, I think in our deliberation, we have to consider to what extent the area contributes to those.
So, it's a shape, dimension, character, and location suitable for its use, to assure its use as a park recreation, conservation, or...
But that being said, I think, well, we're going to comment on the park.
Which land having one or more of the following characteristics is included in the proposed open space. And I suggest that we go down each one of those and see if that space that is considered part of the open common space meets those, any one of those requirements.
And I think that, you know, without getting into every d, single one, I think that it's really E that would be possible. Right?
Except it's not that portion that we're talking about, the heavily graded slope.
I disagree, I think that that's...
If I made the design section, so, I really like how you... So, we're talking about this part, right?
Yes.
So, I think if there's an opportunity to move these two houses, put them somewhere else, maybe put them here and there, and having this small corridor open, I think it would be even much nicer, like, park experience, because now, now you have this for the, for the town, accessible, and it's completely private. Even if you have it visually connected, like, from here to you, even if it's not, you can have it physically accessible, you can have steps down, slope is not a problem, okay, you can, I mean, you don't need to run in slope, you can have, but that would create a really nice, big open space that's accessible for the...
But I believe there were other considerations why there weren't units on that back section. I think there were questions about access to the septic and...
If there is a way to, to move one of these houses or two of them, I don't know, put them somewhere else, I think that can create a very different...
Yeah, and then I also just want to caution the board, I think that what we really need, I mean, yes, we can make our recommendations, so like, what we would like to see, but I also think that we do need to evaluate the plan as it's given to us. Yeah. So, again, back to this question about the, you know, there has been a calculation of open space, and we have to decide, is there that amount of open space? Okay, Nathan says no, Kate says yes.
Well, I, my position is that the open space, 1.165 acres of the park is there.
Okay.
With the elimination of that house on the corner. This is going to sound silly, I do want to know what everyone thinks about whether they're going to slide down that hill. But regardless of that, I want to see more to count that back acreage as habitat. That's my issue, because I'm concerned about, I mean, a big thing with development is habitat fragmentation, and that's exactly what you see here. So, I would, I would wonder whether there's things that we can do that's basically under this plan to make viable corridors for a while, but I, I'm moving, but that's my position.
Kate, can you specify which houses, what you're talking about, do we need?
No, I'm saying with the changes that you guys made.
But you said something about moving the house on the corner?
That has been done, right?
No, she's saying what has already been done.
Now that's done, I thought my mark's there.
Yeah.
For, to count that land as contributing to common open space in a meaningful way, I think we still need to work on the habitat value at the back, that's my position.
Are there people's positions on the common open space?
I, I believe in the, is there a reason, in, in our calculation of common open space, we've been looking at the park, but would not also that, that the parcel in the center be included?
Not, no, the portion in the top right would be included.
No, 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 not in the top right, in, in the...
In the middle, that is not being calculated towards a 25%... In the middle, that is not being calculated towards the 25% anymore.
Why, why is that not included in the common open space?
Because it doesn't qualify.
Why not?
It's, basically, it's in the backyard. Remember, we had talked last time about that it didn't really invite the public because of the way it's in the backyard.
The common open space doesn't need to invite the public, it needs to be available to all the, the members of the PRD, the residents of the PRD.
Correct. But it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean any of those, it says, it's not habitat, it's not, like, what is it, it's just a little.
Recreation, and, and it's a, it's a, it's a lawn.
Well, and, and in that case, the, the percentage would be higher than the 26% that they're currently proposing. You, because there's an additional, I don't know, it's a 12%, or eight, eight percent or something.
I mean, that's my point, I, I, I'm not, I don't think it just isn't education.
PRDs being aligned, the subject system is their common open space up until, because it is just maintenance, a grass lawn, which.
And which is, I think, the focal area as well.
That it could be a play area that was protected from mainstream.
So, so my point being is, is we consider that, whether they've met the requirement.
Yeah.
I think they've not only met the requirement with the, the front park, how, and, and whether the recreation act characteristic of, of a common open space has to apply to the whole thing or not, it doesn't state that in the, in the bylaw. Um, but I would also be including in that parcel, because I think that falls within the definition of common open space, and so that they've met this requirement.
Other views? I don't think we've heard from Kristen or Haley yet on the open space question.
Well, maybe I'm being confused now, because I thought there was some requirement that some amount of space is open to not only the residents, but the general public.
It's at least that all the residents of the complex, but that also, of course, we wanna encourage those that are available to the general public.
But there's no technical requirement, like.
It's not, it's not absolutely required.
Just goes to the public benefit or like thereof.
Yeah, but then, you know, there is public access in the front.
Sure, yes. Yeah, I, I thought the reason that the centerpiece was excluded is because it, I understood that to be only accessible, or only for the residents, rather than the other two pieces, which are co- common and open to everybody.
No, technically, I think it's just been excluded because in the past, we've kind of said that it didn't really meet all of our criteria, qualitative criteria.
Um, yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I, I agree with Kate, I mean, um, when you, when I look at an aerial view of this property and the neighboring two properties, there's just sort of, I think I have that PowerPoint or something.
Yeah, that's.
Like, the, I mean, and I, you know, can appreciate, I'm new to the board, the board's turned over, and previously, this was open, but this, there's a, just sort of such an obvious, um, lack of connectivity here, when all, the rest of this is, you know, um, conservation land or wildlife land in some way, and so, just in general, the property, yes, quantity wise, they seem to have met, um, the requirement, the quality and sort of parcelization or segmentation of it here, and here, and then here, just from a quality perspective, doesn't seem to be fitting what I understand the intent of this specific bylaw to be, um, which is generally like more of what you see over, over here in Duncan Village, which was clustering of housing and then a giant open space, which, again, I understand that maybe was the initial proposal, I wasn't here, but, um, that's what I understand the historic intent of, of this bylaw to be.
Uh, Kristen?
I agree that the, right, that the quantity is, meets the minimum, and it looks like that was kind of how it was done, and then, and everything else has developed. Um, I, I do wanna make sure we don't kind of get swept up in the, well, you wanted us to, you know, move this or that, um, and that's why it's like this now, I think that what we wanted was to preserve open space, and then whatever amount was left could be, you know, developed under, under the bylaws, and if it's not this many units, because open space is being preserved, quality of space is being preserved, then there are fewer units. It's not something that we are forcing on them as a result of saying, you know, open space here or there.
All right, so, so your feeling is that then the open space is being met?
I feel, I feel the quantity is, I don't feel the quality is, I, I agree.
And so what would be your recommendation of improvement?
I would recommend that there be, um, in addition to the, the park that is in the front, and the, you know, area in the back, that there be some more open space that continues, so there's that continuity from east to west. Yes, thank you.
So.
Yeah, and I guess I would just add too, that, you know, when, a lot of the language in this PRD is enhancement, um, of open space or wildlife habitat, not maintenance at best. Um, and that just feels like, because we are trying to maximize, I mean, as far as like the history of all the other PRDs in Concord, as far as I'm, I've understood them to be, like, most of them knock 25% out of the park and don't try to put as many units on this side of the parcel, even if it is being just basic density act, and so I don't know why that is, like, but that's just what the history of our PRDs are telling me. Um, so, I think we are in sort of this exceptional example, unfortunately, of, of what we're trying to do on this piece of property.
Can I, can I just, uh, Marcia, do you know, i- in the, this section, it mentions service areas, what that is meant to be?
What number are you looking at?
Ten point, two point nine, like in the first sentence of the common open space definition.
Page ninety five of the book.
Yes.
It could be areas of mailboxes, it could be a service road, it could be, um, different things that support, uh, it might be a place where they, they keep their dumpsters, it might be a storage shed, there are, uh, in the past, there were a number of different types of PRDs, uh, and so, uh, it could be a service road, it could be fire department access, those are, would be considered things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then, I mean, my own opinion on this is that up until now, I've not been happy with the open space opportunities that were offered by the design. However, I wanna say that this new design provides a significant improvement, um, and that, in fact, the, the park area at the front is far more usable. Um, I actually think that the path is something that if I lived on Main Street, I could probably cut through, go down Highland to get to the town. Um, I also feel that, uh, the preservation of the mature trees is a significant improvement. Um, and so those are all things that are very positive, and then the setting aside of the wetland, I think that there's almost actually very little choice there, but that, again, it does provide some habitat, I do agree that it would be great to have better continuity, uh, of that habitat, uh, there may be some things that the town can do to help with that, with the fence, for example. Um, there isn't very much space behind those units, uh, I don't know where it's gonna come from, if, but, that's, uh, that, that is kind of the choke point on this. Um, but I do think that the plan has, has come a long way, I do agree that it's, it, it's less than what we've had for a lot of past PRDs that are, certainly those that aren't driven by affordable housing, uh, but I do wanna say that for this location, um, and for the kind of conditions that we're in right now, that there's, the minimum is provided, for me, so.
And I, I don't wanna go too far afield, could, and stay near open space, but on the, you know, I, questions of encroachment or, or enhancing open space.
Yeah.
I think ultimately, anytime we're talking about this, we're talking about somebody putting a bulldozer, you know, in the ground and building something.
Right.
And, and so, by the, by the letter, you think, well, how do you enhance open space by building something? I think, I think it's always, we remember that, going back to the purpose of this, we're talking about an alternative form of development.
That's it.
And what, and, and we have to be cognizant of what the alternative would be, and how much open space you would get there. The alternative is not, um, likely to be a no build, the alternative is likely to be instruction of something that doesn't cluster at all. And when I look at this, I think, gosh, it would, this would be so much easier if it was 20 houses, or, or what have you, to, to work with, as a PRD, to be clear. Um, but I'm, I'd echo what you say, uh, you said that about that front, I could imagine walking by that and it actually looking like a park.
Well, you actually live up the street, so you.
Yeah, so I do walk by.
A real thing.
Yeah, and, and it would, I would think that, um, it would, like you said, I could see cutting through that, uh, to go to Highland Street. Um, uh, and, and that's been a big improvement, it's, this, that, it, I think, especially if we have input on what that park design looks like, it won't feel like one of those fake pieces of, of green space that, you know, has a development sign in it, but it, but is, is really the front lawn for the development, it's not open space, I could see that actually being used as a park, um, so.
Okay.
Um, so can I, um, ask whether, as I say, um, for me, connectivity would, um, kind of meet, get me to where I think that the quality is there. So, would it be possible for us to ask the applicant whether they can think of something under the current plan to provide connectivity through EUA twenty five, twenty six, and seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen? That might be a combination of, um, like prohibitions on certain kinds of fencing, or the installation of certain kinds of vegetation that, um, enhance the use of, like, don't prohibit travel by wildlife, and maybe a consultation with NRC, or something like that. It, can we at this point solicit, like.
Well, I mean, I don't think we need to get that tonight, we're just gonna.
No, I'm not saying tonight, I'm not saying tonight, but I'm saying.
We would recommend to put it in a condition.
But then how, would we, how would we have control over.
A recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Right.
So the Board of Appeals would determine whether their.
There, that condition would actually be.
And maybe we could even condition if that, um, like they can settle with NRC or something.
And, and then the Board of Appeals could get additional information, um, that addresses your recommendations.
Okay.
So, um, okay, have we gotten enough out on that point, so we can move to the next section? Again, we haven't come to consensus on anything, but we've gotten the senses of different members' perspectives, so that we can discuss this to a consensus next week.
Yeah, and this is moving on to a subsection of what we've been discussing, but on the trail, um, and I, and I appreciate.
Sure, and that's a part of ten nine, ten two nine.
Yeah.
One.
Yes, um, so I know the NRC directors walked the land and said that the connection of it with a formal trail system is not likely. Um, what I, I would like to see though, as a condition, if, if we were to recommend this favorably, I would like to see as a condition, that, that, that be set up for there to be a trail on their property. Um, I think that, um, what would happen is, if, if that's not done now, it, it'll, it'll forever foreclose it in the future, and, and, and people won't be thinking of it as there was ever meant to be a trail there, so I would wanna see that as a condition.
So I disagree, because I think that goes against this as habitat, because once you have a trail there, you have people, dogs, and there's some, some rental pool on the other side, and there is isolated wetland, and I think we actually wanna keep people out personally, I mean, because we do so much for people, like, build them all these houses, but what do we do for like the frogs and the salamanders, and so on.
I think I'm, I'm trying to reflect in many of the comments we received in letters about connectivity with, 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 with the potential for trails through that, through that town on land.
So, so, um, uh, so the, the sidewalk on, on the outside, um, loop of the roadway does extend over to that end of road adjacent to the town on land, so if there was an informal trailer, would you comment?
Where's the sidewalk? Could you point it?
Yep.
There's no sidewalk there, so.
But there's a sidewalk proposed, but it's just not planned, or there's no sidewalk?
The sidewalk goes around the outside of the loop road, to there, or through that corner too.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I just wouldn't wanna see a fence at the end of it.
No.
So, as I said, that's, you know, it's, it's either that section of fence is either on this property, which the Board can make a recommendation for a commission that'll be removed, or it's on the town property, and the Board can make a recommendation to.
The town.
Through the Natural Resources Commission, who are the ones that, all of that property, to remove the fence on that portion of the property.
Does Delia want to?
Um, I, I will ask.
Okay, all right.
And I'm, I'm sure.
Or she might just wanna.
To the, to the National Resources Commission next Wednesday, um, the Apple can compose that question to the Commission.
Yeah.
Whether they'd like to see that fence removed.
Okay.
Or can I just rephrase the question?
Sure.
What does, what do they recommend to, um, enhance that as a wetland corridor, that area?
The NRC.
Maybe, maybe it's taking a chunk out of it, so they wanna.
So I can relay the.
Great.
Board's comment to the Natural Resources Director that, um, that input from the Commission on how they feel that enhancing that, um, natural wetland corridor could be the thing, and is removing the fence, um, a possibility.
Okay, are we done with ten two nine one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, that, so that's all the, the sort of qualities of the open space.
Yeah.
Okay, next is, uh, basically, the accessibility of the open space, and, and really, it's about what is the, um, legal, um, means by which the restriction's made, and I thought, Kate, it sounded like you had concerns about that, but I, it seems like town staff is comfortable with.
Right, I mean, I don't know if.
With the mechanism being proposed.
I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I don't know if the standard of a permit condition meets the standard described in MGL one eighty four, section thirty one, but, uh, I guess you feel that it does.
So what we've recently done, um, this was for a, you're just, a lot of preservation of a historic structure, this is off of Park Hill Road, um, so.
That's not a park, we're talking about.
No, but we're talking about a preservation restriction, so, similar, it was not a preservation restriction, capital P, capital R, that goes through the Historic Commission, goes to the SLEP Board, and goes to the State, um, so they, um, did something similar to that, um, in all of the language that goes into a, um, preservation restriction, and it was adopted by the Historical Commission, adopted by the SLEP Board, and recorded on the property, so.
It's recorded on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
It is a restriction that is recorded on the property, so, um, again, it's, we feel that we've had that practice with similar restrictions, um, and that drafting a restriction that gets recorded on the property regarding that, whether it's habitat in the back, or whether it's some type of, of park in the, um, in the front, Marcia said, we have the same type of restriction over there on fifty five, Sixth Street property.
Okay, I mean, I.
That's recorded on the property.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that there's a reason why it goes through all the processes it does to have a real conservation restriction, is because then it becomes very difficult to ever remove, which is the point of having capital C, capital R, but, again, I'll just leave, leave it.
I understand that, um, the, you have to recall though, that this initial language was developed in nineteen seventy six, when conservation restrictions were very, very different, they did not meet the same standards that they do today.
Okay.
Um, that citation in the law has become very, very restrictive and very, very challenging. It needs to be publicly accessible, it has to be accepted by the State, and if there, and what Delia was commenting on is where you aren't providing sufficient area behind each of the units for the enjoyment of the people who are living there, there is the potential for encroachment, further encroachment into the open space, which is why we wanted to create a flatter, level area behind the units, and establish a definite delineation of what is the open space, and what is the space that I can use, that I can call my own. So, um, so we have these two aspects that are challenging in this day and age, and I think the planning board, when you're looking at the PRD, you may wanna rethink citing that particular section of the law, as it is today.
Okay, well, we are looking at the PRD, but that's separate.
I don't know what you mean, you mean, you mean MGL one eighty four.
I mean, what, the reference.
Not ten, not ten two nine three.
Right.
All right, so what I'd like to suggest is that we have one final discussion for tonight, before we close, or before we continue to. before we close, before we continue to next week. And that is for Section 10, 4, 2, 6, which is, you know, at the end of our list of things that we need to recommend. And this is kind of wraps up the set of things that are also in the Purpose Section 10 dot 1. Essentially, it, you know, does the proposed site design, development layout, number, type, and design of housing constitute a suitable development for the neighborhood in which it is located? So that's sort of, you know, the wrap up. We've talked about the provision of open space. We've talked about diversity of housing units. Those are other things that are in 10 dot 1. Now it's really about the suitability of the design and shape of the development for the surrounding neighborhood.
Hold on, Matt, just say the citation again.
10, 4, 2, 6, page 101 of your yellow copy. Sorry, 10, 4, 2, 5, excuse me. So this proposed site design, development layout, number, type, and design of housing constitute a suitable development for the neighborhood in which it's located. So this is all about context. The types of housing, you see the design of those houses, their layout, does that fit into the neighborhood? What do you think?
I think it does.
Other opinions?
Speaking to just one aspect of that, one thing you've never really seen, especially, at least not with this latest one, is the, is an elevation from the street, what it would look like. And I would suspect that in terms of literally visually fitting in, that from the street, this would fit in with, with the neighborhood. I think that virtually everything after the Y in the road, you know, where the circle is, is going to be largely out of view. And so the, the area where it's most densely clustered will be, won't be visible, but what people will see is driving by, they'll see three or four houses from Main Street.
And I want to acknowledge that the applicant did go through a substantial process to revise the, the architecture in response to wanting to make it more consistent. And I think the park certainly has been a real enhancement to the neighborhood character.
I agree with the view from the street that, that I think that would fit in, but I, I do not think that the number of houses is suitable based on the parcel.
And, and I don't, I can't speak to a specific number of houses, but one thing that we all know since we've recently looked at potentially modifying our, the PRDs and deciding not to modify the PRD language because there's essentially no sites that, when we were talking about within these circles around the, the village centers, there's no sites remaining, and this was identified in the Long Range Plan specifically as a potential smart growth or whatever the nomenclature of the plan is, but it is a smart growth lot. So that speaks to increased density because of its location close to the village center, which was expressed by, as a goal of the town in the, the, the current tenure plan that we're in. Again, I, I don't want to steer us to saying that this is the right number, but the, we've heard a lot of comments about there's too many, there's just too many houses, there'll be too much of an impact on schools or, or traffic. But we've, on the other hand, have a goal, and a lot of these things I find are in conflict in the Long Range Plan, but one of the goals is to increase density within walking distance. And this is, this is essentially, I think we identified there was one other potential PRD site, not as close to the Concord Center train station, close to the Concord Center, but otherwise it is this site.
Other views on suitability? I don't know if we've heard from Nathan.
I think from the, I will say, the streetscape, you know, has developed and progressed in the right direction. I think in each iteration that we've seen. My one comment would be to go back, and this can solve two problems, would be to go back six, eight months when we were talking about garages, and I think at that time I said maybe they should be 50% one-car garages. I think we're at one-third or something like that. So just to reduce the, the garage front and also to go to a comment I made earlier that, you know, more than half of the homes that are going to be placed here are of, of effectively two different designs. And so once you're in the development, you would see a lot of repetition. That might be masked somewhat by different color palettes, but the actual design of the homes would be very similar.
Alan?
I think, again, in the streetscape perspective, it's, I think, but in terms of plan, I think it's, it's too dense as we talk, compared to the diversity areas, it basically doesn't fit. If you look at it with a satellite view, it's not the same texture as the rest. When you can look at it that the figure ground basically doesn't fit with the rest of the area. But that's, at the same time, we want density, but maybe this is not the right way to do density, but that's a different topic.
I mean, my view, I think, is kind of aligned a little bit with the discussion that Elizabeth and we had a couple of weeks ago about PRD revisions, that, you know, you, you could have density, you could have, you know, open space, you could have.
Affordable housing.
Yeah, affordable housing, but, you know, now you put them all together, you can't, you know, how do you make them all happen? You can't make them all happen at the same time. So there is always going to be some, something that gives. And I think that, you know, the architecture has been modified to be more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. I think that the, the streetscape aspect has, you know, been made as compatible as possible the units along Highland, for example, being cited the way that they are. It is true that, you know, that sort of circuit road and the clustering of units around them are different, but then the whole point of clustered development is to then open up some of these open space areas. So that is the compromise that we make. And to me, while certainly, just like everyone else, it would be nicer to have fewer units on that lot, on the other hand, it is an area where clustered development and access to commuter rail in the, in the village center would orient towards, well, if you're going to put fairly dense housing anywhere, you know, it would be in, in discenty. So I actually think that this passes muster on, on that particular point. Once again, with some caveats, but to me, it basically does that. Again, I'd love for a different design, you know, so many things, but it's not my problem. And also I'd say that it's interesting to see, you know, one of the other arbiters about, is it a suitable development for the neighborhood or a butters? And what have been the views of the butters? Interestingly enough, I mean, the, the butters have been generally more favorable, not always, but all, generally more favorable than.
That, that's not true. I've been tracking it, the emails that have come in, and approximately two-thirds have been in opposition, and the majority of those are within a quarter mile of the property.
But those aren't the butters. I guess the.
Direct to butters.
So direct to butters, there are, what, one, two, three, four, and then Center Village?
Highland and Highland Street.
Well, the. Across on Highland Street.
Well, we heard from a number of them here tonight, and I only recall one that was explicitly in favor.
I thought, I thought I heard.
We, we definitely got letters.
There were two in favor.
Well, one was.
Yeah.
Which is similar to how we feel.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's.
We understand that.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So that was, nice.
Yeah, just to be clear though, I mean, as we're debating 10, 4, 2, 5, that doesn't supersede the conversations or opinion you had, for example, about diversity of.
Diversity of housing units. No, but that's a separate section.
Because it's like obviously like interrelated.
Yeah, so I think that what we're going to do now is continue the discussion for tonight. However, what I'd like to draw the board's attention to is next meeting, we will be focusing on Section 10, 4, 2. And in particular, 10, 4, 2, 2, 10, 4, 2, 3, 10, 4, 2, 4, 10, 4, 2, 5. And, and 10, 4, 2, 6 is the bottom line, right? So study up on that, get clear on your views, and we will try to come to consensus on each of those things. I think it's what we've kind of yielded tonight is there is a diversity of opinion on the board. And so it may be a challenging report to write up. Thanks, everyone, for your time tonight. Actually, we probably have still liaison reports, right? And, and general public comment, which is not project specific, okay? So please, if you're exiting at this moment, leave the building entirely so that you don't disrupt our final few minutes, hopefully very few of our meeting. Okay, so on to the next topic. And I, I hope that we get out of here before 11, maybe even before 10:55. Were there any liaison reports?
I can just quickly run through CPC.
CPC.
Because we now have our.
Please be quiet. Please leave the building if you're going to discuss.
Yes, so CPC has now put together its recommendation for a warrant for funding. And just some highlights, tonight we looked at that A and R plan. We funded $350,000 for an affordable unit there. And, and the nice kicker to that is the current house that will be on the same lot is, it, it, well, it is a, it is housing, it is an affordable unit that's run, owned by the Concord Housing Corporation, whatever that entity is.
Yeah.
It's not on, for some reason it doesn't count towards our count of affordable units, but this project will.
Turn it into one.
So we're getting a two for.
Two for one.
Two for one.
Awesome.
Though in real terms, one, I mean, in terms of people who can't afford houses, getting a house, it's one. And just quickly, there was funding for permit, is, a design permitting of the West Concord, the, the bridge over, over the.
Esbit River Bridge, footbridge?
Yep, there was funding for the Warner's Pond Park improvements and for dredging in Warner's Pond. And, gosh, I'm just thinking of other stuff that's, planning board is related to. I mean, we spent a lot of time, we had two religious organizations both seeking funding, which created complex Massachusetts State constitutional issues. That was the large majority of our, of our conversation, but, but a lot of support for West Concord projects this time around.
Okay.
Downstairs tonight, there was supposed to be the Comprehensive Sustainable Energy Committee meeting, and they were going to talk about proposing a warrant article about a general bylaw about, you know, no more fossil fuel infrastructure. So we'll see what comes from that.
Feature of PRD discussions might be different. Okay, any other liaison reports? Like I said, I went to the town meeting, preview meeting, and there's, we, we have, you know, 10 warrant articles. I think that there are, the others, there's maybe two notable things, that, yeah, that fossil fuel infrastructure, that it may end up being a select board supported article. But then the other one was, we had looked a little bit at the wireless communications, and Steve Eng got up and said that he might do a citizen petition article, I think to actually increase access of Wi-Fi wireless communications in town, which was kind of a surprise to me. So that may be something, again, most of the 5G is in the public way, so it may not involve us, but it may involve us, so we should, we don't know what it is, but that, that was something that was brought up. Any other liaison reports, anything?
Wait, now what are we doing next?
What are we doing next?
So what's going to happen on the 17th?
What are we doing on the 17th, so?
No, I mean, first, on this project, so we.
On this project, we are going to, to provide our recommendations, our, our input to the town planner to compose our report on our recommendation, either to approve or not approve the PRD.
And that's going to be different than the conversation we just had.
The conversation we just had was a sort of sense of the members of the board, we need to get a sense of the board, okay? Next time. But also, we're off of that topic. I mean, we, we can't discuss that project.
Cancel.
Okay, well, just, we're discussing the agenda for the next meeting. That's okay. All right, so the other thing that we're going to talk about is redlining the warrant articles, that, the draft warrant articles that we are proposing. So for that, again, what I asked at the beginning of the meeting is provide any sort of pending comments that you have on your warrant articles to Elizabeth so that we can get a consolidated list that we can review next time so we can get definitive language by the, the 7th, so that we can get it into the warrant, okay? So those are the two big things we're going to do next week.
And Matt, can I clarify for the agenda for next week?
Yeah.
Is it, is it true that for next week, that if we, like, it's more useful for us to have a recommendation if it's not, the project's not the way that we want to see it, like, that that's productive?
So it, it would, it, it's going to be.
We have to provide a recommendation one way or another.
Need direction on, on how to draft your recommendation.
Right.
Letter, that would come back to the board.
And then that we will. That we would vote on.
Certain elements that you want to recommend be tweaked or, so that's what I need on your agenda for next time.
Okay.
So I can write something, draft something for your agenda on January 7th.
Okay.
Okay. Now I think we're done with.
Holiday get-together, a lighter.
Oh, all right, let us know.
I have a meeting centered around a, a, like, query of available dates for people who want to do that. So I'll do that hopefully tomorrow, actually.
Okay, and venues?
Well, that'll be determined potentially on when.
On, on, okay.
Remember to post it in the paper.
I mean, I'm willing to, I'm willing to, you know.
You may not want to do that.
Even though I have not made a consultation, I, I think that I could offer our house as a venue. So that would be.
Houses.
Okay, so why don't we?
Then we have to go with Matt's date.
Yeah, well, no, but, okay, I've, I've got a consult at home, but I, I think that we can do it, okay? A public comment, any public comment, general public comment. All right, seeing none. I think we're adjourned for tonight. Thank you.